Have your attention, please. As you can see, there's quite a few people in here. A TV has been set up in the forum out there. I'm gonna have everybody that's standing in the back and to go out into the forum and just listen, you can follow it out there. And we're gonna...
I don't know what they're gonna do on the agenda, but...
You're gonna have to move now. Everybody in the rear.
Yeah.
All the way down.
But we can open the doors.
Yeah, open the doors. And he's got the other... He's got the TV out there as well.
Okay, I didn't know that.
You know, fill up any seats.
I'll open the doors, too.
What's that?
I'd open the doors, too.
Yeah. Then open the doors and do that.
Make sure you go through the door so...
Yep, yep, yep. He'll do that.
Right after what? Right after the updates? No, no. Yeah. That way it comes off. Okay. Is he... Is Ed ready?
He said wait.
Do you wanna tell him to keep the doors open? Why?
Uh, I don't know.
I'd say no. Yeah. It's easier to hear. It doesn't matter. But it's easier to hear if you keep them open.
Mr. Spearman, I guess we could open... Keep one door open or two?
Can't with the...
Oh, with the set going? Got it. All right. That answers that question, Counselor. All right. What is... Yeah. It is all set, is it not, Mr. Spearman?
It's all set.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying it. All right. Good evening, everyone. Sorry we're a bit late. Had a lot of business to discuss on executive. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to come out of executive session, if I might?
Some move.
Second.
In a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
Motion to seal.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, we're out of executive session. We don't have the regular Pledge of Allegiance.
The invocation's around.
Yeah, I don't know. Mr. Spearman, we're gonna...
You can add it on.
We're gonna add it on. If you would be so kind to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you would bear with us while we're standing, just to bow our heads, say a brief prayer. Dear Lord, send us guidance tonight. Send your blessings to us. Let us do the right thing and keep all of us safe and bless all our military service people, whether they're overseas or here in our country. Amen. And if you could also go through the emergency evacuation plan, if necessary, sir?
Thanks for the emergency. Please don't lock the doors. You can go out the rear doors and just go to the right or left and take outside.
Thank you, Mr. Spearman. They tell me it's eight straight, Mr. Spearman. All right. It's the first time ever that they've started the season eight and one, if the Journal's right. Huh?
Doesn't mean they're that good.
All right. Just to... I know we wanna move this along. President's comments, just a few brief ones. First of all, we have the invitation. The council got to opening day for Coventry Little League this Saturday, April 14th at 11:00 a.m. Donovan Frenzy, the president of the Coventry Little League, has invited all the town council, if they're able to make it, to stop by. Great opportunity to meet the board of directors, volunteers, and the great families that the league works with and supports. So, that's at Payne Field this Saturday, 11:00 a.m., April 14th. Secondly, just a general notice, April is a month that Coventry residents that have dogs need to get their dogs registered. Eight-dollar fee for the month, for the year. This month is when you come in and bring the rabies shot certifications, and the period will be valid for May 1st, 2018, to April 30th, 2019. That's right here at the Town Hall. Thirdly, Earth Day is coming up Sunday, April 22nd, but the time to pick up litter is always. It's certainly now. We've had a very tough winter, much debris all along the streets. Let's show some Coventry pride and clean up our town. It doesn't cost much, trash bag, et cetera, and the benefit is priceless. So, let's think about cleaning up all the debris that's out there and making our town not look so beautiful as it is. Lastly, well, not lastly, Saturday, also April 14th, is opening day for fishing season for those fishermen. Best of luck, have fun, and certainly be safe. Lastly, I would like, on behalf of the town council, our town employees, our town government, our town residents, to, at this time, thank our town manager. I think we've all read or heard that our town manager, Mr. Graham Waters, is leaving service as our town manager. Friday is scheduled to be his last day. The last two years plus have been very enjoyable. You've done, I think, an outstanding job with a lot of tough situations, coming up from Maryland and relocating. And I know that you make the decision that there's other things to pursue, and I respect that. You know, you have to go with your heart, and we wish you the very, very best. And again, the time you're here, I know it's been 24/7.
Here.
Glenn Shibley.
Here.
I know a lot of town managers' jobs are emails, meetings, doing the best you can to help
Greg LaBosnier.
Here.
Nick Gorm.
Here.
Graham Waters.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We are definitely rolling now. bring in businesses. At this time, approval of the town council minutes. And we're still, this week, looking at solidifying some things that need to be solidified before The first minutes is a March 20th meeting, which we didn't have a quorum last time, I you leave. So, thank you, Mr. Waters, and we wish you the very, very best at your future endeavors, think, to vote on last meeting. So, I know, Mr. LaBosnier, you weren't present at the meeting on the 20th, but do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the March 20th meeting? whether they be town government or in another field that, you know, satisfies you at a young
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. age and certainly makes you happy. Voting, the four of us, all in favor? So, thanks again.
Aye.
I wanted to get that in. Aye. Okay. All right. That's the 20th. At this time, next is the approval for the town council minutes. Now, the next set of minutes are the March 26 meeting, which Mr. LaBosnier was on his We would like to, I guess, first cover the March 20th. anniversary cruise, 40 years, and I was down helping my daughter's family as she was overseas Yes?
Do you wanna do roll call?
down in Virginia Beach. Oh, that's right. So, I was also not present. It's a big point. We'll do the roll call over... I think that's the first one I have missed in a couple of years. We're not over, but we'll officially do the roll call. And that's one of the other things that was missing on the heading. But regarding those minutes for the 26, those three council people that were here, do I Thank you for reminding me, Dev. All right, roll call. Mrs. Lavoy. have a motion to approve?
Carrie McGee.
Motion to approve.
Here.
Do I have a second?
Deborah Bacon.
Here. Second.
Any discussion on it? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Three approved. Okay, thank you. So, next, we'll do the council district updates. Mr. McGee, why don't we start with you, District 3?
Yeah, everything is going pretty good in District 3 as of now. I just had some questions, and I think a DBW director here can answer when the street sweeping is the next major step. When will that be posted on the website to let people know when their streets will be swept?
Should've been posted today. We're starting it on next Monday, the 16th.
All right. So, then, thank you very much. I had some questions, and hopefully we're all done with Snow Song, but kudos to DBW this year. Did a good job. We had, I think, 16 or 17 events that they had to plow for, and guys put a lot of hours and a lot of time in, so thank you for that. But that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGee. Mrs. Bacon, District 5?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Carlson, District 1?
Good evening and welcome to Town Council meeting. Mr. Waters, what's the... Is there an update on the Flickr report, or who should I be talking to about that now that you're not going to be here?
The planning director is handling the Flickr report. She's working to plot out the individual homes and properties that are in the analysis zone for the study. As soon as she has that completed, she will submit that map to the consultant for them to perform the Flickr study. It should take about a week once that map is submitted. So, each individual property and individual shed, house, et cetera, has to be mapped out, and then that can be submitted, and we don't have that right now.
But they've started working on that, I hope?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next, I do have an update on some ROTC volunteer efforts I wanted to share. This past week, the Coventry High School Navy ROTC cadets did some great volunteering and have a community fundraiser for Operations... I think it says... Had. Fundraiser for Operation Stand Down. Adam Andrews, a Navy ROTC cadet, and former cadet Ben Jacvony volunteered with the West Greenwich Fire Department when the silver alert was issued for Coventry resident Frank Bergheimer. Cadets James Bennett, Lauren DeCoursey, Sarah Freed, and Devon Amadon participated in the Coventry Animal Shelter Spring Rabies Clinic. Next, April is Military Child Appreciation Month, so the entire unit is recognizing and honoring the month by collecting canned items for Operation Stand Down. Canned meats and ready-to-eat items are needed. Easy-open cans that do not need a can opener would be best. You can drop off your item at the high school, contact Master Chief Ed K. at the high school at Extension 183, or send an email to CoventryDrillTeam@gmail.com, and they will make arrangements for pickup. The cadets will also have a donation drop-off box located at the Coventry West Greenwich Elks Lodge. And last, the color guard performed at the April 2nd Annual Meeting for the Western Coventry Fire District. The next thing I have is a letter from the Office of the Auditor General, which I want to share. I'm not going to go through the whole schedule, but I'd like this put on the website, Graham. Okay? Dear ladies and gentlemen, as a follow-up to my earlier letter dated February 26, 2018, we will be moving forward to address certain issues related to the challenges of the Town of Coventry Sewer Fund and related operational issues. I've enclosed a summary of work we've performed to date and work planned over the next few weeks. As noted in the enclosed summary, we will ascertain the status of work being performed by Citron Cooperman, which has been engaged by the Town of Coventry to perform a review of the town sewer program. And this is signed by Dennis Hoyle, Auditor General. So, I'd like that entered, and then they can see the schedule. Okay?
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
What?
Do you send me that, please?
Yes, I will.
Mr. LaBosnier, District 2?
I am going to acquiesce. We have a long meeting, so I'll talk about District 2 next time.
Just a couple of comments. District 4, I had mentioned Earth Day and picking up litter. I know that one thing I see basically daily is litter along Route 3, Ty O'gavenue, going from the Fagan Door Business location all the way down to the West Warwick Line. Couches, broken trash bins, just papers in general. Obviously, whether we're coming into Coventry or leaving Coventry, heading down the West Warwick Line, it doesn't bode well. I don't know if our town somehow can rectify that situation or ask the residents or the business people to patrol their locations along the highway, because it has been that way for a while. It's not necessarily just a bad winter. It's just nothing but trash. And I know that people can get out there safely and try to pick it up, but it's overdue as we head into spring, when we are in spring. Secondly, I understand that... I believe weed abatement is underway or will be underway for the Lake Ty O'gavenue, courtesy of the Lake Ty O'gavenue Association. I think I read that, Mr. Waters, on an email. Did I not?
That's correct.
All right. Well, that's a good thing. We've gotta protect our lakes in Coventry, and obviously, that'll be a big help. So, that's it for me on District 4 update. So, before we get into the scheduled review of municipal and school operating budgets, capital, which is Item 4, B4, I would like to do two things right now. Ask that we move the Section E, Discussion and/or Action on Ratification of Collective Bargaining Agreement, as per our Town Charter, Section 3.14, parentheses, 0, up, as the next item on the agenda. And following that, I would like to also ask to move F, F3, where we have before us a resolution relocating the capital funding for the...
No.
I'm sorry, that's wrong.
Yeah.
Wrong. F2. I jumped. F2, where the relocation or resolution for allocating funds for the Department of Human Services temporarily moved to Oak Haven to prepare for the building for occupancy. That would be following the charter on the collective bargaining agreement. So, that'll all come before our other review of our budget items for the different departments that has been scheduled. So, we can basically, I think, address some of the residents that are here regarding those issues, and we'll go from there. Now, at this time, I know we have previously been given the information regarding the current proposal as it currently stands. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to our Vice President, Mr. Greg LaBosnier, who has been on the negotiation team with the school, our representative as the council, to further explain where we are right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
I just... We had it on the agenda to ratify the agreement, which had been, in essence, ratified by the school committee, but with discussion, the council members had concerns, and upon having those concerns, I was contacted by Mrs. Aronakis about, you know, to discuss that. And in our discussions, we had a... I told her that I felt that, you know, we could... We would be prepared to ratify it if... With a little bit more on... And the tentative agreement was... That we discussed was changed in Year 2, bringing it from 2.75% to 2.25% in the second year. The... They heard our concerns. We understood, and I do wanna thank them for that, because it does mean some substantial funds to the tune of about $400,000 savings to the town in the last two years of the contract. The... I had full... Which I will fully support, et cetera. But I need to turn it over to our solicitor, because he had some concerns and wanted to make a statement regarding the, in essence, the full... I guess, he said, pre-ratification of this. So, let me turn it over to him for an explanation.
Well, just procedurally, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Procedurally, the town council is limited to being able to ratify an agreement between the school committee and the collective bargaining unit, the Coventry Teachers Association. So, as I understand it, the school committee is gonna schedule a vote on the... What the unit has approved, Ms. Aronakis? As I understand it, am I correct?
The school committee has already ratified. With the reduction, they will reratify on Thursday.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, after Thursday, we're planning on having the same motion that was on for tonight on the agenda, which will probably be for Monday night.
Is he doing it both nights, sir?
What do you... Excuse me?
Can she come up?
No. If you could...
Can she come to the microphone?
Sure.
Can you give me a...
Well, why don't we just have a...
Come to the microphone. Thank you. Thanks, Kelly.
You're welcome. Because the agreement's been changed, the council has to ratify the agreement that is made between the school committee and the Coventry Teachers Association. There isn't actually an agreement yet, other than the one that prompted the Vice President to come and try to negotiate, renegotiate some of the terms of... With you, and which was eventually approved by the unit. So, now, there is no actual agreement for the town council to ratify, but that's okay because the town council expects to bring the agreement, once ratified... Once approved by the school committee, back. And I think... I can't predict how they'll vote, but I think if you allow them to express their sentiments tonight, I think you might see some confidence that it will be ratified in fairly short order. I can tell you this, it'll be put back on the agenda as soon as possible after the school committee approves it.
So, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So, may I ask if the council can make a motion to approve the tentative agreement, if so approved by the committee? That way, the 100 constituents that are behind you will know what the feelings are of the committee.
Well, what was on for tonight, under the OMA, is ratification of the existing agreement. There's no question about that, and they're limited under the OMA on what they can vote on. And my job is to make sure they follow the OMA. That would not be really following the OMA explicitly. And the other thing is, the charter doesn't... It doesn't allow for pre-ratification or anticipated ratification... Or ratification of an anticipated agreement. It only allows for ratification of an agreement that is in effect.
Correct, sir, but it also does not disallow for ratification, pre-ratification.
Well, I think it does fairly clearly, if not implicitly. I think if it had meant to be for ratification in these circumstances, I think it would've said something. I don't wanna argue the point.
I'm really not trying to argue. I'm just trying to do what's best for everyone to move forward. The schools cannot... So, right now, the schools are in the process of forming their budget. The contract that's on the table allows them to hire less than .5 people, which they cannot currently do. The school calendar can't be done. It's really holding up the schools' budget, so I'm actually just trying to see if you could amend a motion.
How about this?
Sure.
I think the best that we can do tonight is for the members of the council, each of them, if they wish, to express their sentiments about the changes that were made, because they've certainly reviewed the entire agreement. As I understand it, the changes were really only made, I think, to Year 2. Is that correct?
Year 2.
And it was a fairly concrete change. I think they would be prepared, I know at least some of them are, to express their sentiments about it, and I think that would give you the comfort level that when it comes back, there will be a vote in accordance with the OMA and the charter, which your unit would be happy with. The most I can ask them to do is express their sentiments. If we take a vote, I can tell you this, if somebody challenged it, they'd be challenging it and saying it's a nullity as well as a violation of the OMA, and I don't wanna do that. I wanna do this the right way, and this is the way to do it. They can certainly express their sentiments, but really, that's it for tonight. The contract they were gonna ratify has been changed, or not ratified, whatever they were gonna do.
Well, according to your logic, it hasn't been changed, because the school committee hasn't voted on it yet. So, there is a contract on the table to ratify.
I'm not gonna argue the point. You know what? I've sort of given the direction, and, Mr. President...
Thank you, Mr. Gorm. I think he's been pretty clear, Mrs. Aronakis, and I think we can wait a week. And I personally, I think it's a good move on the changes, and it could only help getting the ratification next week. Personally, I like to see it in writing, and I like to have it approved through the channels, and I like to do things legally. So, we're gonna just have to live with that, and that's my personal opinion, but I think you're gonna have support. That's what I think. Like I say, and that's only my personal opinion. All right? Anyone else, Mr. McGee?
I wouldn't mind saying a couple.
Okay?
First of all, I wanna thank the CTA for their efforts to look at the big picture that we have to look at, and I appreciate the hard work that Mr. Aronakis took the time to discuss with us further to try to get it to be more affordable. We didn't wanna rubber stamp it like the school committee did. We wanted to look at the big picture and do what was best for the whole town, all the taxpayers. So, I, like I said, I appreciate the work you did. I thank you for that. We've come up with a large savings, and I'm gonna push to take that savings that we have and push it to go to capital improvements for the schools, which are desperately needed. So, thank all your teachers, all the renter file, for doing this. It makes it much easier for us, and I appreciate the work, and you have my support on this. I don't necessarily agree with the solicitor, but he's our solicitor. That's the rules, and we're gonna live by it, but you have my support.
All right. Anyone else? You wanna do anything, Graham?
Yes, yes.
Anything?
and fully expected to vote on it, and in a positive manner as well, too. So, I fully support it, and will expect that you'll have support for that. And thank you all. Thank you.
Mrs. Carlson?
Well, this was news to me this afternoon, or late this morning, I guess. I didn't know that any of this negotiating was going on.
You were out of town.
Yeah, I was out of town, so obviously, I didn't know. But I guess I feel like I... So we're going to just have to live with that, and that's my personal opinion, but I think you're going to have support. That's what I think. Like I say, and that's only my personal opinion. All right? Anyone else?
I wouldn't mind saying a couple.
Okay?
First of all, I want to thank the CTA for their efforts to look at the big picture that we have to look at, and I appreciate the hard work that Mr. Aaronakis took the time to discuss with us further to try to get it to be more affordable. We didn't want to rubber stamp it like the school committee did. We wanted to look at the big picture and do what was best for the whole town, all the taxpayers. So I, like I said, I appreciate the work you did. I thank you for that. We've come up with a large savings, and I'm going to push to take that savings that we have and push it to go to capital improvements for the schools, which are desperately needed. So thank all your teachers, all the renter file for doing this. It makes it much easier for us, and I appreciate the work, and you have my support on this. I don't necessarily agree with the solicitor, but he's our solicitor. That's the rules, and we're going to live by it, but you have my support.
All right. Anyone else? You want to do anything, Graham?
Yes, yes. Mrs. Aaronakis, I fully expected that we would be able to amend the ratification tonight and fully expected to vote on it, and in a positive manner as well, too. So I fully support it, and we'll expect that you'll have support for that. And thank you all, thank you.
Mrs. Carlson.
Well, this was news to me this afternoon, or late this morning, I guess. I didn't know that any of this negotiating was going on.
You were out of town.
Yeah, I was out of town, so obviously, I didn't know. But I guess I feel like I, I'm not just voting on that section, the salaries, I'm voting on a lot of other things, the benefits, the pensions, and all that stuff. And, you know, Kelly, we haven't even heard anything about what's going to happen with the SRP contract, or when you're going to start that, because that's up also, right?
You heard last meeting from the school committee, ma'am, that said that they were in the process of that, and that Sarah Mandrelli, the business manager, has already figured those raises into the proposals that's before you for next Monday night.
Okay, well, and then also, I just think it's a very good contract, it's a rich contract, but I don't know if we can afford it. You wanted me to give an opinion or a statement. I'm giving a statement, I'm sorry. I mean, I'm just really, when it comes, sorry?
I'm talking to the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was for me. Usually, it's for me. I guess, you know, I'm looking at all the budgets right now, and I'm looking at the school budget, and I just don't want the kids to be cut. I mean, I looked at this pie chart, and 84% of the school budget goes to salaries and benefits.
Because you have to educate the children, therefore, you need a teacher in the classroom. You have over 5,000 students, that's where the money's going to go.
Well, all right. When I look at the numbers and I see steps one through nine, they don't get any increase, but step 10 gets three years of increases.
Because step?
Excuse me, I'm asking questions, people. If you want me to vote, you've got to give me the information.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, Kelly.
We have a conversation with the councilwoman and your representative, and noise from the side wall, we don't need. Thank you. I don't want to have anybody removed. We're just trying to expedite this and then handle it next week, but thank you. Go ahead, Mrs. Carlson.
Thank you. Because last time we went through this, and we were hearing there's not $75,000 for science kits. We were going to cut ROTC, we were going to cut band, we're going to cut all this stuff, and it's always about the children, and it is about the children. But I look at this pie chart, and I see supplies, 4%, furniture, 1%, I have a hard time with that.
Ms. Carlson, if you realize, the teachers are coming off two freezes within five years. There is no other department that works under you, excuse me, let me finish, please, that has taken a freeze period, let alone two in five years. So we have given back to key programs to get all daycare, to get supplies. As far as the furniture, that is a capital budget that this town council has not filled in seven years. So that is capital materials. We do need furniture, we need desks for the students, but you can only fund that through capital, which you're not giving.
Well, we're also giving maintenance of effort every year, and we're constantly adding on every year.
By law, by law, yes. But you're not only maintenance efforts for your other departments, I do not begrudge my brothers and sisters in any union any of the pay raises they're getting, but you have given the police over the past three years, 333, and your municipal, 444, and you've given your constituents that are before you, 4% over five years compared to 9 and 12. I think the teachers have done their share.
And we've also increased the police contributions substantially, so it didn't work out to that much.
If you read the contract, we have healthcare benefits for us going up from 16 to 20%. We're doing the same, ma'am, on freezes for two of five years.
Well, you know, this year's budget at the financial town meeting is going to be a tough one.
It is, and I think our constituents will be there, and there's going to be a lot of change.
Live in town, and I mean, it's going to hit all of us.
Yep. Only, it's been hitting a certain portion of us for a long time. My opinion.
Well, Kelly, we won't, we don't agree on, I mean, there's a lot to consider in the contract, and honestly, the council hasn't sat down and gone through it.
You've had it for two months now, ma'am.
I know, but that's not my fault. I don't schedule the meetings.
You've had an executive session posted on the Attorney General's agenda five times now. If you haven't read it, that's not my fault.
I didn't say I didn't read it, I said we didn't line by line discuss it.
Five meetings, I would think you've had the time. My opinion again, ma'am.
We haven't scheduled it for five meetings.
If you look at your agendas, under executive session, it's been on five times in two months.
Five times?
Correct.
If you have that meeting, then discuss four of them. Well, I guess I'm the only one.
Okay, anyone else comment before we move along on this? Mrs. Bacon, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, Mr.?
I'm sorry, Mr. LaBosinier.
I would like to mention, one of the other concerns that I know that I had had was, again, the people's ability to pay in the second and third year, and through my discussions with the superintendent and with others, I believe that the new pathways to education are going to open up opportunities to bring in students from outside of the district, which will, which will cut down a lot of the money that would be going on the tax levy. So our revenues will go up substantially with the new pathways that are involved, which was one of my deciding factors as well, too, to support that contract. So it wasn't just about what the teachers were giving back, it's about what we could do for the educational community, not even just in Coventry, but for people who choose to come to Coventry for their educations. Thank you.
Okay. I guess that's, okay, so we don't need a motion to do anything right now, right? We're not tabling it, or are we? Motion to table or until next meeting? Or do we not need to table?
She, her point of order typically supersedes all else.
Okay.
And you can hear it and see if it is indeed a point of order.
Yeah, mic, please, you want to? Yeah, we will, we will, as she comes up. We would like, we would like to ask you a name and address for the record.
Mary Vanderveldt, Seven White Oak, Coventry.
Okay.
I have a question, that if this goes for an agenda and a vote next Monday, and with the timing that this has to be placed upon the agenda with the Attorney General, so we can have the town financial meeting set, are we going to be in the timeline so that this will be approved and our budget will go forth on this time allotted for the town financial meeting in June? Because I know there's time limits in so many days that it has to be up there, so I am a little concerned. The more we keep pushing back, 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 are we going to run out of time to get that up there?
Mr. Gorm?
Sure. We can, we can schedule votes in anticipation of what we think the school committee is going to do, and I think we have a pretty good idea of what the school committee is going to do. So out of an abundance of caution, I'm pretty confident, I can't speak for the council, but that something will be properly scheduled to vote on this as soon as practicable after the school committee votes. Even anticipating the school committee vote.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure that we're not going to run into an issue on the town financial meeting.
That's a fair point, thank you.
Monday, hopefully.
Okay. Right, that's all right. All right, so that, as I said, Mr. Gorm, as far as moving it to next week, it just moved, right? We don't do a tabling? Okay, all right, so that's done, thank you. Next week. Next, we have to address, we'd like to address F2. We have the resolution to allocate the funds.
Mr. President?
Oh, all right.
Two-minute.
All right, two minutes, so the people can leave. Thank you. All right, if we can close that door, that'd be good. Next on the moved up agenda, we have F2, which is, we had before as a resolution to allocate funds for the Department of Human Services temporary move to Oak Haven and to prepare the building for occupancy. And at this time, I'm going to start with Mr. Graham Waters to describe where we are at this time.
All right, so at the last council meeting, the council members discussed a resolution to allocate funds to assist with the move of the Department of Human Services out of the Wood Street facility to the Oak Haven facility. Councilwoman Bacon and Councilwoman Carlson and Councilman McGee expressed concerns about the costs and other options. So I had my staff during the past week research other opportunities. Councilwoman Bacon also asked that we explore other facilities, other human service facilities around the area. They've done that as well. I would like to call Mr. McGee, Mr. Robillard, Mr. Finnegan up to the podium to discuss some of the options. And of course, we have Mr. Tebow here to guide us on the finances.
Oh, yes, Mr. Tebow, for sure. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'd like to start with Mr. McGee. He was able to finish all of his estimates, and before you, you have an email that he sent me earlier today with some final numbers.
I didn't get any of them, that's all right.
So before, before I go any further, I'll have Mr. McGee discuss it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
There should have been a email that Councilwoman Bacon has in front of her. I put, yep, I put one in front of each seat.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't get it by mail.
At the last meeting, there were two critical portions of the relocation cost that were not included because we didn't have the prices. Since then, we have gotten those prices. The electrical work would be, cost estimate came in 153,457, and the life safety upgrades would be 110,000. Because of the cost with the existing numbers that we had given at 211,000, I recommended to the town manager to remove the Oak Haven from consideration for relocation of DHS because it was going to obviously come up closer to that 450 range, and it didn't, for a temporary move, it didn't make, it did not make, did not make sense at that point. Councilwoman Bacon and Councilman LaBosinier had asked about looking at some other alternatives. The email indicates the efforts on that, and I'll let Mr. Robillard speak about some of the others that he went after. And as you can see, the prices from the prevention building would be 150,000 a year. The former Benny's building would be 352,000 a year. They don't, it's 28,000 square feet, and they didn't want to sub that out. Alda Chester only has two classrooms left because Cornerstone is going there, and they don't, they have some ADA issues, and then all the upgrades Cornerstone is going to be making to that, on those six classrooms they took. We have met several times with Bioscience right here in Coventry down the road. They have, we looked at the space, 8,541 square feet that they could allocate to us, includes the cafeteria, office space, and open program space and a storage room. That price, we've negotiated to about 81, a little over 81,000, with some minor changes, with some door access adjustments, telephone and data drops, and several interior partitions. It will be available as of May 1st for them to hit the target of having DHS out of Wood Street by 6-1. Those are the options that I came up with, and it's up to the building committee and the town councils to decide if any of those work for you. And I'll let Mr. Robillard speak now.
Thank you. I have to commend Mr. McGee and his work on trying to find a solution to this issue. He's done some great work. I was tasked at the last town council meeting to seek alternatives, local and within the area, for options for space for programmatic needs, and looked with some assistance to Westwark, Department of Human Services, and you folks, I think, all have a copy of the letter that I had given to the town manager earlier today. And I met with Manny Murray over at the Westwark Center, and he was very gracious. He has offered some space for our use of his meal site, and also, he has a office that's available for a staff person. I also outreach to, as asked, to the housing authority, and I spoke with Julie Letty, the director, who said that she had a couple of cubicle spaces, and we could share a meeting room. I also outreach to Marge Godelman, who is our human services director out in West Greenwich, which is kind of on a shoestring, they don't have much facilities, but I asked if she had any ideas, you know, within that location, you know, within the town of West Greenwich as well. She did not have any options as of this morning. She was looking into some, but did, basically said there really wasn't a lot out there. I also spoke with Ms. Blumenthal, who's our director of Parks and Recreation for utilization of space there, and because of the ongoing need for youth services throughout the summer and the use of the building, that it was not considered a viable option to provide the services that we're requiring. And also, I toured the bio building with Mr. McGee in regards to space allocation and appropriateness of, to meet the needs of the department, and feel that that space is conducive to meeting the needs of not just a piece of our program, but a cohesive move of the entire department to a singular building so we could provide good services.
So?
Graham Waters?
Those are some, some of the research that the staff has done. Because Oak Haven is prohibitively expensive, and thus, the resolution doesn't apply anymore, we're not asking the council to take any action tonight. What I'd like the council to do is provide some better guidance, and then maybe a resolution can be prepared for the next council meeting or for the next... for the next council meeting or for the next meeting on Monday to act upon. But if you'd like to have discussions, what, as a consequence of the estimates that came in for Oak Haven, if we're not able to use a town facility, then we can no longer use the remaining bond money for energy efficiencies. And to utilize impact fees would be a little trickier also, but that would depend on if we, the financing, the financial part would be more complicated. So, we'd have to look at utilizing the bond, which is doable as Mr. Tebow, Mr. Tebow cleared with the bond council as well as the remaining bond premium of $30,000.
Okay. Mr. Tebow, you could probably just add a little bit of more information. I know that we had, tentatively had the information on the estimates, Mr. McGee, of all the itemized at that time was around $211,000, pending some outstanding costs that, I guess, just came in. We found this out, Mr. McGee, correct me if I'm wrong, but we found this out this morning. You convey that to Mr. Waters. Electrical work, another $153,000. And who was the estimate on that particular cost, if I could ask?
Airheart.
Airheart, okay. Well-known, well-thought-of. The life safety upgrades, another $110.
That's what just came in today from Sintas.
Okay. So, that's 260 added to the 211. Is that the math I got? Okay. So, that's why, obviously, unfortunately, it's a town building, but Oak Haven seems to be taken off the table. And at your email, I just, again, we've given it tonight, prevention buildings down there near Coventry lumber, correct? And it's, I think the name has even changed, but they don't have a kitchen. Okay. And former Benny's building, real close to my neighborhood, it's 352,000 a year. Is that with no improvements? And they don't have a kitchen either, do they?
Right.
Okay. So, I'll just add that, no kitchen. And Chester Hova, Our Lady of Chester Hova, no upgrades, ADA issues. So, we're down to the fourth bullet point, Bioscience, which, you know, we've been there, ribbon cutting, et cetera. Down the street, Mr. Robillard, that 8,541 square feet, is that sufficient on the size?
Yes, it is.
Is that what you're saying? Okay. And it does have, we've seen the cafeteria.
Yes, we have.
Is that cafeteria, can I ask, as I know they're probably providing some meals, but is it sufficient to provide the meals?
It is. It is because the warming ovens and the space would fit the need. And all the handicaps are more than accessible as well, which is a big concern.
So, outside of it not being a town building, again, Mr. McGee, you're estimating the total cost $81,682 for utilizing that space. Is that for a year?
That's an annual, yes.
Yeah, for a year.
For a year.
$82,000. Okay. All right. It's right down the street, near the town hall and the town annex. To me, and again, it's just my personal opinion, having had this handed to us tonight, to me, that would be a common sense decision to, if the parties are all agreeable. Mr. Dr. Gerald, no, I meant the doc and the owners of the building.
Yes.
That's important that they're receptive to the idea.
Yes.
And that all happened, what, this past week?
Yes. This past week, we met Monday with Mr. Robillard.
This past week.
And I met again with him today.
All right. Well, you know, I've liked the element over there, the players and the people, and agreeable, that's even better. And my personal opinion, to not hold up the process of the timeline, and Mr. Finnegan, maybe you could add some additional information regarding that. I know that you're, you were thinking of coming to comment tonight. And I, you know, I found out, I think, about that Friday. And I'm glad to have you here because you're a busy man, but as far as, and I see Mr. Heatherman out there, the comment would be what?
Well, we hadn't received any of this information.
You didn't?
No. So, we had a meeting, I had a meeting with the town.
I found out this morning, so I apologize. I didn't call you.
No, that's okay.
All right.
So, this information is actually, in my opinion, better for the town and the taxpayers because it's going to cost us less money, and there was concern about Oak Haven. We thought it was reasonable to make the investment recommendation that Mr. McGee had up until this additional information.
Yeah, the bombshell.
But where we're at now is we have bids coming back in that I spoke to the architect today, and a delay, he would estimate at 5% to 8% of additional cost. To re, to put it on hold would be about $100,000 to $200,000 cost.
Just to delay it.
Right. So, he would, he is not looking forward to a delay.
Right.
But we have a meeting Wednesday.
If it's not postponed. Is Wednesday still on?
Wednesday is still on at this moment, and we really need an indication if we're going to be able to get DHS out because we're going to begin this construction in early June.
So, this is the timeframe, that May 1st to June 1st?
June 1st, yeah.
If it's your timeline, is where you're...
June, if, yes, if...
That's the goal. We can get into the building in May, just to get it ready, and then they can get out of 6-1.
So, that fits perfectly.
That's, I'm sorry, Karen, I just got a couple of questions, and I'm sure we made a little...
6-1.
The $81,682 is the rental for the property? That's, you know, my calculation is $9.56 a foot, in essence.
Different proportions of the space is different rental rates.
Okay.
But it comes out at about $1,600 a month.
Yeah. Like I said, or if you, you know, dividing the square footage by that 9... It's under $10 a foot where everybody else is over that, so I think that's good. Are there any other costs, you know, the moving costs?
Yeah, the pricing that I had given you folks last meeting had some of those costs included. Very minor, the moving costs, I believe, is like $1,950 by having a local company beyond the town forces. The relocation of the pool tables, the...
Relocation expenses, there's no hard costs.
Nothing like it was for Oak Haven. And again, and then again, we're meeting, depending on how the council discusses today. I've already spoken to Mr. Gerald, and I'll be going with Ed tomorrow to look at the data. So, there are some relocation, there's some partitions that need to be done inside.
You're not upgrading people everywhere. It's right down the street. It sounds like a great move to me. So, I'll pass on. Mrs. Carlson?
Mrs. Carlson?
I think this is a much better solution, and I appreciate all the hard work that you all have done because I did not like the idea of Oak Haven. We all know that. Where are the funds coming from to pay for this?
As previously discussed by the manager, some of the funding sources that would have been used for Oak Haven are not permissible for use or very difficult to legally use.
Right. So, we can't use the balance of the premium.
So, the performance energy bond remaining balance would be out. Impact fees out. Annex bio safety upgrades, which is a capital item, there's funds left over that would be repurposed with council resolution would be out. There's, there'll be approximately $30,000 left on the bond premium once the cement floor is poured for the fabric, four-season fabric shelter. Whatever the term is Kevin uses, I don't know the exact term.
The tent.
The four-season fabric shelter. So, anyway, there's 30, approximately $30,000 left from that job.
And we can use that?
Yeah. I'll read you the email. I know you've seen it, but for the benefit of anybody and anybody listening, my question to bond council was, "Most of the bond premium is spent in the bus yard and physical plant relocation is previously discussed below. Can the remaining balance of the bond premium and some of the bond proceeds, that's the $5 million, be used for this move?" She said, "Yes, this is permissible." I went back to her to get further clarification and asked her, "Can any amount from the proceeds from the $5 million be used for the Department of Human Services temporary off-site relocation?" I just wanted to be clear. And she responded, "You may want to be, you may want to be sure that such expenses are not generally out of proportion to the total project cost so that it wouldn't be seen as a way of sneaking in and operating cost to a capital project." And she put some parentheses, the sniff test, if you will. "For example, we have approved busing costs in the case of where a new school is being built and the kids needed to be bused to a swing space during construction. We think it's just a cost of getting the project done improperly attributable to the capital project so long as it's not out of proportion. This is a similar case." And when she says "we," she consults with the tax attorney at the firm just to make sure that there's, everything's on the up and up. So, that's her response.
Okay. So, that's $30,000.
Well, $30,000 for the premium, and then the bond, the $5 million in proceeds can be used in addition to the bond premium. It's unauthorized use.
Okay. So, you're taking another $50,000 out.
Well, sturdy. Whatever the amount, yeah, yeah. So, the $81 minus the 30, so you're looking at approximately $50,000. If it goes one year, my understanding is this might be longer than a one-year rental.
Is it an annual lease or a monthly?
It's an annual lease for the first 12 months, and then it's monthly for the next six months, which is like $6,800 a month after the first year.
Okay. So, it would be a one-year lease and then month to month? Okay.
Up to six months. Otherwise, if it goes beyond six months, it would go back to the annual rate, which is the same.
So, that's the lease?
Yes.
But then I'm, but then if, where you say only two-door access adjustments, telephone data drops, and several interior, I get, you mean partitions? Partitions? That's not counted in the lease? We still have to pay for that?
Yes, we would, along with the move.
And the move for $1,945.
The thought process tonight was to find out if the council was amenable to this type of relocation, and we can get a harder number for you.
Okay.
Because, again, we'll be meeting with Ed tomorrow there. My facility staff will go there to look about what the cost would be to build the facilities and to change those two doors to make them ADA accessible. They're just undersized a little bit. So, those are the, those are the costs. Very minimal.
So, you're not even thinking maybe 20 extra?
No, not even that.
Up to $100,000?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Yeah, that would be good because I think it's a viable option, but I mean, we need hard numbers, so that would be excellent. And Bill, you'll be happy to get what you need, right? This will empty the building for you?
That'll allow us to begin construction.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Because we don't want to delay net.
And the only...
We only have $12 million.
The only input we'll need from the council is that $70,000 if you're going to direct us to take that out of the building.
That kills it. I mean, I don't like to do that, but I don't see where else we're going to get. We can't use impact fees.
Bob, didn't you list all the monies in the last resolution?
What about, go ahead, Bacon.
What do the operate, the monthly operating cost for Wood Street?
Are we saving that money?
Are we?
Well, yeah, we would be.
Okay. So, we could look into that, correct?
Yeah. In addition to that, my dear, the idea was mentioned to me today by somebody else that we could possibly use impact fees on the back end of the project if we're a little short. Police and Human Services, particularly the police, have in excess of $200,000 in impact fee balance right now. And actually, I was talking to the Colonel about this this afternoon. He'd be willing, if needed, to use some of that impact fee money with council approval on the back end if there's any last, end of the project items that needed to be funded.
Would we have to pay the entire $81,682.50 upfront at the beginning, or is this a monthly?
This is monthly. They would ask for the first and last month, and then it would be monthly after that.
We're trustworthy.
Of course we are.
I mean, first and last month, good grief. So, then maybe we could, if we don't have to pay it all upfront, we could get to that point where whatever cost savings there are from Wood Street, we could start putting it towards this and maybe not keep using bond money? You know, like the utilities aren't going to be costing us anything at Wood Street or whatever else. Oh, yeah, that's true. They can't work in the dark. They will plug their drills in. I was just trying to squeeze some pennies. Thank you.
I had asked a question previously on all the dollars you had put on this resolution of the past. You know, identified $194,000 for 2015 performance energy bond. Is that not, no longer available? I mean, all the, are these $13,370 Human Services impact? That's not available anymore?
I would say no. And as the solicitor had mentioned previously, and maybe the manager had mentioned, for sake of discussion, if you wanted to use impact fees on a building that's not town-owned, I think that's a big, that's a big legal question.
Oh, I got you. All right. And how about that $31,358 that wasn't in the resolution but was going to be added? Is that, remember you said add the $31,000?
That's impact fees as well.
That's impact. And that's because, you can't, because it's town? Not a town building?
Not a town building. I mean, the solicitor would have to get a legal opinion as to whether or not that's permissible.
All right.
But I would say, I would say no, and he's shaking his head no as well.
All right. All right. Well, I understand. I just wanted to ask those questions because by not going to Oak Haven, is, some people didn't think it was a good idea. We lose in a lot of different other ways. Yes, we're going to end up only $81,000 plus the additional renovations and the cost of moving. And we'll sale, save money, but after the year, obviously, you don't have anything, and Oak Haven just sits there. Either way, we'll find the money, and we will not touch that $12 million that's going to the facility. I don't, I don't care how we find the money, but we'll find that money, and that $12 million's got to be for the facility as a bond passed and to build the police station and the Human Services building. And we hope we can do it within $12 million and don't need more.
We have a 60% budget. That was an update from the last meeting.
Right. You said you're on budget.
We are clearly on budget.
Okay.
Mr. Finnegan, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Sure. Go right ahead, Mr. McGee.
First of all, Mr. Finnegan, I want to thank you very much for you and your commitment, the hard work and effort you put into this. I know it's been trying, you know, the last six months, and you guys put a lot of work in trying to get those fees. I would have loved to seen Oak Haven get rebuilt if it would have been feasible, but it obviously isn't. So, I think that this $81,000 is our best choice. I think it's close by. It'll work out for seniors, and I think that'll be a good solution. I say, I was hoping we'd be able to keep the, reap the harvest of fixing Oak Haven up, but like I said, it didn't work out. But thanks again for all your work.
And the nicest thing, as we welcomed them into Coventry, as we cut the ribbon, and Mr. Waters, you had a lot to do with that, we gave them some help coming in, and it's coming, coming back to help us now. I guess, you know, one hand helping the other, which is nice. I can't believe this all happened within the week, which is, to me, very pleasing. Keeps us on the timeline. And I can't see where anyone would be against the idea, and we'd just have to come up with that 81-plus monies.
So, you would expect that to be approved next week?
Monday.
Okay.
Monday. And we just got to get the figures. Mr. Waters, as you're waving goodbye. Mr. Tebow, and the resolution to be drafted Monday.
We can just modify the resolution.
Well, it's going to have to be modified somewhat. But I'm okay with Monday on that. I don't know how the majority of the council feels. But Mrs. Bacon, you want to throw a couple of comments in?
No, I just want to say thank you for looking into this and finding this other solution because I was very concerned with the cost over at Oak Haven and potential other costs that were in here. Also, I just want to request, Bob, that email Also, I just want to request, Bob, that email that you sent to council with all the attachments, I'd like to have those part of the meeting minutes, this way everyone, the folks can understand what Bob was, all the emails he was referring to, and the attachments. Could we make that part of the meeting minutes? Please? Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you again for all your hard work. I appreciate it, all of you. Thank you.
Good luck the next seven days.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming out. All right, so those are the two bumped up items, and there's still residents in the audience. Right now, Mr. Waters, I guess we go back to before, which addresses the departments that were listed on April ninth. Public Works, Sewer, Parks and Rec, DHS, and Library, I think are the ones remaining for this week, if I'm not incorrect.
That's correct.
Okay.
So at the end of the last meeting, it was decided that if the council wanted to go over the departments that were discussed on the second?
Yep.
Just to review, because there were only, there's two of you missing.
Right.
That's up to, to both of you.
Okay, Mrs. Carlson and Mr. LaBosse-Nier, I guess you, you're the ones, oh, no, Harry, that's right, working night, sorry. Those two, do you have any concerns about the items listed last week, or do you have any questions you want to ask about those departments, or how do, how do we, you're not gonna address them all, unless maybe if they have specific questions? Okay. Okay, Mrs. Carlson, any of the other departments discussed last week?
Yeah, Kevin, I have some questions. Can you come?
Kevin, Kevin's department wasn't discussed last week.
It wasn't discussed last week.
Oh, it wasn't?
Yeah, right here.
No, that should be tonight. Last, last, last council meeting, we discussed the town council budget, town hall, town manager's office, town clerk.
Fairly limited.
IT, HR, Board of Campus, Town Solicitor, Municipal Court, Finance Department, Tax Assessor, Collector, and Board of Review.
Right, planning and zoning.
And planning, yes.
Yeah, you're, you're up tonight, but not, not yet. This is revering last week.
That would be up, that would be up first.
Yeah, I know. Well, he's not going home.
Well, all right.
Any questions about last week?
Not from last week, no.
Okay, I think we're good, Mr. Waters, on last week. Now, shall we start with Public Works, and then tonight?
We should, if, if the council feels.
Is that okay with everyone? Yep, that's good. So Mr. McGee, Public Works, and eight-ten up to eight-eighty. That'd be fine. Just, you can reach the mic, right? Good.
And Mr. McGee, do you want to go through them? Eight-ten Engineering, eight-twenty, what is eight-twenty? Inspections and permits, eight-thirty Roads and Bridges, and so on and so forth.
Good evening.
Before I start, I just want to make a few points that the department has, is going to encumber with this town manager's budget, which I agree with, you know, his decision because of other circumstances. This year's budget for Public Works as a total was five million, six-hundred-and-ten-thousand, one-twenty-seven. The town manager's adjusted budget comes in at five million, six-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. That's an increase of only sixty-eight thousand, six-ninety-five. I just wanted to bring this to your attention, is three items outside of the control of DPW that we're gonna have to absorb into this budget. Due to an IRS determination, the plumbing and electrical inspector can no longer be utilized as contractors, they have to be on the town payroll. That's in addition to the DPW budget of thirty-eight thousand, seven-oh-two. Even though they're paid for out of their permit fees, it still has to be added to our budget line. There is a contractual and burden increase for all of the town workers within the department, which totals, between FICR and the contract, a hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, eight-thirty-four. And we've been notified last year also that Rodala Resource Recovery is raising the tipping fees once again. They raised it from thirty-two to thirty-nine-fifty last year. This year, it's gonna be thirty-nine-fifty, it's going to forty-seven dollars a ton. That is a seventy-nine-thousand, twenty-dollar increase. Those three items, I have no control of, is two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, five-fifty-six. And my budget has only been increased sixty-eight thousand, six-ninety-five. So I would ask that have some, some consideration that when you're looking at possibly making additional cuts, that we're already at bare bones, and we're behind, gonna be behind the eight bone. I have Division eight-ten, which is Engineering. Are there any questions you folks may have on the Engineering budget? It's actually a decrease of fifteen thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars from last year.
Any questions? It is an almost ten percent decrease?
Yes.
Mr. Bacon?
I do have a question.
Sure.
Professional Services, I saw the decrease from forty-nine thousand, one-hundred to twenty-five thousand. Is that the Engineering when they did the phosphorus study?
That's correct. They were only able to, they're only gonna be able to accomplish by six-thirty of this year, a percentage, basically fifty percent, and the twenty-five thousand for next year is the balance. So we're not spending any more money than was already allocated, just it's running, the time is running out at the end of six-thirty, they're not gonna have the entire study completed, excuse me, by that time. So it's gonna, the twenty-five thousand has to make up the balance of that.
And when do you think the study will be done?
It'll be done by the end of the summer.
End of this summer?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have anything budgeted if it comes back, that we have remediation to do?
This is just a study, ma'am. Until we know what that is, we haven't budgeted any money.
We haven't budgeted any money for that?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on eight-ten? Okay.
One more, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Engineering Services, it went from zero to three thousand?
Yes, that is on line two-one-nine. That is the MS four, which is a municipal solid stormwater, and that's a report that has to be done on a biannual basis, and that's why it was at zero last year, it's three thousand dollars that were required by the state law to perform.
And what, what's the report? I'm sorry?
It's called the Municipal Stormwater Form, and it's part of the EPA requirements.
Okay.
So that's the same three thousand that was spent in fiscal year seventeen?
Correct.
Yeah, they see, just every other year.
And that report's being done now?
It will be done.
It will be done?
It will be done, once you give me the money for it, yeah.
Fiscal year nineteen.
And when was the last time we did this?
Seventeen, it was started.
Okay.
We hope to have that report.
It's every other year?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Then if no other questions, eight-ten, then let's go to eight-twenty. Inspections and permits?
Correct. Inspection the permits, you'll see the increase in that department is based upon what I indicated earlier, the thirty-eight thousand, two-oh-two, the IRS requirement for the two contract inspectors to be on a town payroll now? Plus the contract and burden difference, that's what, forty-six thousand?
Is that you, Mrs. Carlson?
I have a quick question on that. You mentioned, it's like, Mr. President, if I may.
Yes, Mr. McGee, I'm just grooving to the music here. Go ahead. Mr. McGee, go ahead.
Okay, we all set? All right. You mentioned that you had to, we require you to put the plumbing and the electrical inspector on it. Now, the money taken in from the permits, is that going to your budget?
No.
So why is the DPW, why is it coming out of DPW budget, and why would the permits given not go back to you to help pay for that cost?
I would defer that to Mr. Tebow, he could explain that from the order.
The revenues would not appear in Mr. McGee's expense budget, it would appear in the revenue budget of the town, miscellaneous revenue.
Okay. Just seems as though if you're getting, you know, that money should be allotted back to that department, if they're gonna take the money out of that particular department, they should have the, you know, the revenues like they have since...
Well, the revenues are coming into the town, it's just we, there's no matchup of revenues with expenses on the, on the general fund.
Okay. That's all I have with that.
Okay. Anyone else on eight-ten, eight-twenty, sorry? If not, eight-thirty will be next. Roads and Bridges, up not quite two percent, one-point-seven. Mr. McGee, it's pretty standard, Roads and Bridges, cost money.
It's pretty standard. We've had to cut back based upon the requirements of the town manager's initial cut, and the additional forty-five thousand dollars that we were asked to cut. We did that also, and so we reduced some of the numbers. Hopefully, we can continue to provide the service that the town residents expect and deserve.
I have a question. I mean, I know it's fiscal year eighteen, year-to-date, and I know it's dated March ninth, and I'm seeing where so far, a million-three has been spent, and so there's a lot more money in the next three months to be spent?
What's the line item, sir?
I mean, total budget. I'm looking at, you know, fiscal year eighteen, the expenses as of March ninth, one, one million, three-twenty-two, Roads and Bridges?
Correct.
Okay, so in other words, basically, la, last year, I guess what, it was twenty-one, two-point-one million? Approved, two-point-one was it spent? So is, again, a lot more money to be spent the next three months? I'm just asking.
Yep, the fourth quarter of our year, springtime, we have
Yeah.
A lot of asphalt work, we have the balance of pot.
It makes sense. I just thought I'd ask it. Okay. And you think it's gonna be pretty well right to the button on expenditures?
Oh, it's gonna be right there.
Okay. It always is. Okay, any questions? Yep, Mrs. Bacon?
I have one question. License and permits, it was budgeted five-hundred, so far, it's seven-thirty-five, and then it, the requested budget is two-thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Why the increase, the license and permits?
Based, based upon the new contract with the union, the town is gonna be paying for all the license renewals for the truck drivers and all the operators. There are a multitude of drivers and operators that come under for renewal this coming year, and we took all those renewal costs and factored that into this, that's why it's, it's something new in the contract, and it's also, it all have to come together at one time, as far as the renewal times.
Okay, anyone else on Roads and Bridges?
I'm just curious, yeah, I was looking at medicines, sixty percent increase, what's that?
Roads and Bridges medicines that we, we do is, we haven't been able to outfit all the, the trucks that are on the road with the small units for, you know, first aid kits.
First aid kits.
So we're gonna be putting those into most of the trucks, and also, we've been having more keeping the, the IV dry and the medicine that require, we have a monthly service that comes in from Z Medical, Cintas, that they service all of our first aid kits throughout the town, so that's why the increase, because that's what the actual cost of coming up to be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on Roads and Bridges? Okay, otherwise, moving right, yes?
Sorry.
Okay.
At the very bottom, motor vehicle, thirty-two thousand, five-hundred.
Yeah, well, that was taken out by the town manager, that's part of that lease purchase that he was provided, so we took the vehicles out of eight-ten and eight-twenty, which are all ninety-seven, ninety-eight vehicles that were bought, used, and they're, cost more money to keep them on the road right now. That was taken out of the, of here, and put into the lease purchase numbers.
Okay, I guess next, eight-forty, snow removal. How's that? That's a guess for next year?
Snow removal was quite a challenge, and I just want to let everyone know that we budget for twelve snow events, which is from the middle of December to the middle of March, to have one a week. This year, we actually had twenty-three weather events, up until this past week, where we did have snow accumulation in the western end that we did have to go out and treat. Our salt line item, this is, is old, we've already spent about a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars on salt this year. I'm taking, trying to find ways of taking that out of the budget by doing some transfers at the end. Same thing with the sand. We can't tell on a yearly basis what it's gonna be like. We try to average it, we've been utilizing about a hundred-and-sixty thousand for the last few years. We've actually, I had requested more, it was cut back ten thousand, so we're requesting fifteen thousand, a hundred-and-fifty thousand. And the additional sand, we're taking out of the Roads and Bridges budget if there's any overages, which we're doing right now, so instead of increasing that five thousand, we reduce that also.
So, so last year, adjusted budget was three-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand? I see, is that, what was spent last year? Three-hundred-and-twenty, twenty-one? Three-nine-eight, is that?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
And we're only asking, three-twenty-four.
All right, so, and we're, the managers recommended a total of three-twenty-four for next year. Okay, so that's two years later, let's hope it's a mild winter.
I can only pray.
Any, any other questions on snow removal? Okay, if not, let's go to the next one, which would be eight-fifty, Building Maintenance, DPW, and it's a minus twelve-point-one, I mean, twelve-point-seven, right, on the recommended?
Correct.
For the total? Last year, what was it, four-sixty spent?
Correct. We ended up spending fifteen thousand, which was for the demolition of the, called the Millworker's House. So that demolition project was being completed.
Oh, I see.
So we took that, we didn't ask for that same money back.
Yeah.
There was, again, water service, Kent County Water Authority was requiring backflow preventers on all town buildings.
Yeah.
So we put that money in, we're not requesting that amount of money back, we're taking that money, backing that out. The security measures was actually moved to the capital improvement program, which now we're not gonna get.
Bless you.
In historic buildings, we had fifteen thousand, two-oh-two, as a town's portion of the grant for the Reed Schoolhouse renovation, the painting restoration.
Mm-huh.
I have not asked, we're hoping now that that's gonna be awarded very soon, and be able to be billed prior to the six-thirty timeframe.
Hopefully, hopefully tonight.
I'm sorry?
Hopefully tonight.
I hope so, tonight.
Okay.
So that's, we didn't ask for that fifty, and that's why you're seeing a lot of reduction, almost sixty thousand that we, that we asked in a reduction.
Okay. Any questions regarding this department, division?
I like reduction. I like reduction.
Yeah, reduction's nice. Mrs. Carlson?
Yeah, two questions. I had asked for a separate section tab, just to give a little bit more information on the annex in Oak Haven, and the building, I see, you know, the, obviously, the repair and maintenance, and then the Oak Haven building is under it. So, the way I'm reading this, it's thirty-five thousand dollars a year to maintain the annex.
What we do is we put all the expenses that come from the annex, to the annex line item, so that we can keep a track of where that, where those expenses are.
Right, that's good.
And then same thing with the annex, the Oak Haven School, now that the school building facilities are there, the building is being utilized, they're paying their, their proportionate share of the expenses, but now the building is being used more, so it's not in a warehouse mode per se, so we are happening to heat more, so the expense at Oak Haven's gonna be a little bit more, so.
Well, they're supposed to pay a lease, I thought.
They, they, the town is working with the school on a lease, however, and they have a proportional amount by their square footage that they are gonna be paying, but there is still an additional charge because the building is being, is open now. And again, we're asking for...
They're not paying a monthly rent, they're paying proportional, proportion of the utilities...
Percentage, so how much space they're using?
Other expenses.
Yes.
But we don't have that set yet, right? There's no lease per se?
There's no written lease.
Do we know when that might happen? Are we under or over, it was like eleven cents, so are we actually saving money by using these solar panels? Because I think we have to, for some reason, do we pay the company a lease or something?
They're paying us a lease.
I don't know. Grant said it's costing us money. You said it was costing us money, right?
There, there's a monthly bill that we pay to...
Because we have a PPA with them. 'Cause we have a PPA with them.
Select energy.
Select, yeah.
And that's what they actually produce, and we, they have a meter on that, what they produce, they actually, we buy, we have an agreement, purchase agreement, and we would buy that at their reduced price, that was done, I wanna say, back in twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen.
Yeah, I have the, I have a copy of that, it was like twelve or something.
And there's a, an actual rate per year that it is, so they're on track.
Is it being cost effective, is the question?
We're not, we're not, we're not paying more for any national grid increases, and keep in mind, at that time, no one thought about the revenue that would be getting from certain green energy that's in the western end of Coventry right now, so.
Well, we don't even know if we are.
Well, there are, I see.
Somehow, we can't figure that out.
Yeah, okay, but again, that's part of what that is, we have a set price that's gonna be per the agreement, and then, when that, I think it's a twenty-year agreement.
Twenty or twenty-five?
When that does expire, then the town could look at that, whether or not they want to renew it, renew it, or just have them come back and, and remove the solar panels from the roof, so, that's for another day, another conversation, but they're there.
But they're working at this point, 'cause they weren't working, the inverter was broken or something?
Yeah, and it came in, they replaced it at their cost, yep.
All right, okay, thank you.
Any other, uh, questions on this area, building maintenance, okay. If not, we go to the next one, uh, refuge collection, eight sixty.
Basically, the only increase there is contractual and burden, uh, it's a, a one point seven one percent increase, or fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars, and that's all the contract, contractual on the, on the, uh, the twelve people that are in the eight sixty divisions.
Okay, uh, any other questions?
Yeah, I got a quick question, just, uh, it's kind of budget-related, uh, are we, uh, making out with our lease for the trucks as far as getting paid from the recycling? Is it working out for us? Is it still costing us money? I mean, just rough, you don't have to give exact figures, I, I know we've been pushing to have people recycle, and, you know, that was the plan, was the recycling money was gonna pay for our, our lease on the trucks.
I, I kind of anticipated that there might be a question.
Yeah, good, good.
So, we were actually able to, with our, work of our recycling coordinator, who's been with us now four months, uh, we were able to track the first quarter of this year. And we also show what, what the actual programs are that we have, what the recycling coordinator in that department works on.
Thank you.
Overall, to answer your question, we need to use that, our recycling rate for the first quarter.
Yeah, but you're not coming over, you wait till you get back.
I can.
Thank you.
The report that I just gave you, folks, I don't know what you, I just gave it to you, but, uh, shows that we are, from the trash collection to the recycling, at Curbside, we're collecting approximately fifty-four point six percent recycling rate, which is outstanding. Statewide, our number is lower because they factor in the waste from the transfer station, which we have very little, very little of that is, is recycled, other than stuff that we divert away from them. Uh, so when you see a, a number, let's, from the state that's twenty-six to twenty-nine, thirty, it's because of the transfer station being included, we also have the schools included in that, and, uh, Westwood Estates are included with that. Uh, the other package I, I gave to you, you can see the programs that we've been able to get started, that the, the recycling coordinator's working on, and we have future projects coming up, Earth Day, and we have the, uh, Compost Fest coming up also in May, so, she's doing an excellent job, is trying to save us and educating the folks. Uh, she goes out, we, we received a grant from Resource Recovery to ex- to apply stickers to all the barrels, the new program that the, the state and the federal government have gotten forward on, and we'll be getting that once the weather finally gets better, hopefully, so, uh, we can start doing that process also. But we're getting the response, and we're getting the work by the education in helping to, our recycling rate to be increased. With these continued raises in the recycling, uh, tipping fees, we have to take every possibility to get these funds, uh, these costs reduced, and we're doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to, uh, eight seventy, refuge disposal. Eight seven zero, it was down a little bit, two percent?
Well, it's down two percent, even though we're, rate is gonna be increasing fifteen point two four percent. Uh, that seventy-nine thousand, twenty dollars I told you about is just on the basic tonnage that we disposed of last year, which is ten thousand, five hundred ninety-six tons, that's a seven fifty per ton increase, equals a seventy-nine thousand, twenty dollars. There was an additional money taken out of the town manager's budget to equal a ninety thousand dollar cut from that line item. Uh, we'll see what happens.
I mean, how can we judge that? How can we justify cutting it? Because, I mean, the people are still gonna be using, disposing the trash, and it's gonna be paid whether they want it or not, it's gonna be paid, so, I mean, how do we cut that? And, and what's gonna happen when we get three quarters of the way done with the year, and, and we still gotta depose, dispose of the trash, and we don't have any money but left in the budget? What are we gonna do then?
So, uh, in sitting down with the finance director, we looked at past year's expenses, actual expenses, and, uh, we made the determination that we could cut that amount. Uh, if it comes through the year and the line item runs out, uh, we'll first ask the department director to transfer money within his budget. If he has no available funds, uh, say, because, uh, for, for budgetary constraints, he can't shift any money around, we will look at other departments within the town, uh, and appropriate money from those departments, and come before the town council with a budget, uh, transfer request.
All right.
And, uh, there's always a contingency fund, uh, and we'll find money.
We, we have to, I mean, we gotta get rid of the trash, all right.
Any other, uh, any other questions regarding this section? If not, uh, the next one is eight eighty, uh, vehicle maintenance, and that's gone up above five percent. Uh, town manager recommends nine hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred. Uh, the last, uh, last year was spent, what, eight, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand? You got it?
Mr. President, we have an aging fleet of
Right.
Vehicles that are closely approaching the eighteen to twenty-year low.
Mm-huh.
Uh, li- lifespan, uh, it's costing us more and more each year to keep those trucks on the road, especially during the winter time.
Right.
This year was extremely costly on trying to keep things on the road because of the, uh, amount of times it's been out there and type of weather we've dealt with and the snowfall we did.
Yep.
Uh, we've spent upwards of sixty thousand, and we've transferred money from other, other areas in the budget to try to keep the truck repair portion of it going. Uh, our sanitation trucks are now at two, approaching two years, some of the wear parts, bushings, arms, which operate, you know, the six hundred stops, so they go out twelve hundred times a day, times five days a week, times a year, so you can imagine how many times those are moving, and those are all, all nine trucks are, got moving parts that need to be replaced, so those san- the sanitation repairs aren't necessarily the trucks per se, but it still ta- it still breaks, it's still the, the, the wear parts that would normally go on your, your day-to-day vehicle, and we're up in the landfill, which is not the, uh, the most advantageous place to be
Right.
With shards of metal coming out, and, you know, we're going through tires, uh, I've got requests in today, 'cause we've got six recap, we're recapping tires that we can, because, uh, because of the damage, rather than buying new, so, um, we'll do the best we can.
Yep, that's it, and if you have to take it from another apartment, another division, we'll have to, but it's expensive, uh, business, and obviously, nothing's going down, and, uh, the landfill is pretty treacherous, that's for sure. I wouldn't wanna even drive in there, but, all right, any other questions? If not, we'll go to, uh, eight ninety is the sewer, I guess is a...
Are the, are the trucks out of warranty at this point?
We extended the warranty, and brought to you folks, and we extended the warranty, so, no, they're not out, and it's, it's the mechanical part of the
That gets used.
Trucks themselves, the Mack trucks are not the issue, it's the bodies, and it's, those are not Mack, those are...
Well, the chassis and the, and the arms and all that, that's not covered?
No, the chassis and the cab are part of Mack.
Oh, okay.
The body themselves and the mechanism are not, that's a different, different manufacturer. Mack doesn't make that, it's, it's...
Okay.
Just one question, maintenance, communications, or equipment?
Yes.
That, 'cause that's a increase from four thousand to twenty thousand?
We had it, well, we actually increased the budget line this year a little bit more than that, uh, with some transfers, it's up to ninety-one hundred dollars. Uh, what happened is that our radio system that we have in, in the Public Works Department are twenty-year-old low-band radios that were given to us when the police department figured they can't use it, they went to the eight hundred series, and I'll, I'll let the colonel ask how long ago that was. We can't get the parts, we have to replace the radios, and there's no replacements that work on our system, and what we're gonna be paying for, a system that's already obso- obsolete. So, we began starting to replace with the, the nine hundred series, which is one series above the eight hundred, which is admissible. By doing so, we're at least putting up into the new technologies, uh, that don't require the low band and, and the repeater that's up at, at the Nike site. Uh, this is a, a phased program we're going through, I'm only, going over a four-year period, the, this year, we actually able to outfit the sanitation trucks, so we had a department with those. Uh, we'd like to be able to do, the next department would be vehicle and, uh, building maintenance, and finish those, and then over the years, get the trucks and the equipment done, so, we'll have a system that works during storms, there was a couple of issues during some of these storms, that the repeater went down, the generator went down, and it, we, everybody had a problem with trying to communication, we wouldn't have that, that type of problem with the, a nine hundred series. So, it's just trying to bring us up to the twentieth century, and rather investing in twenty-plus-year-old equipment to try to bring the town up, up to speed.
Okay, um, sewer department, a new item, uh, in our budget book, Mr. Waters, you, uh, who'd wanna speak on this one?
I'll defer to Mr. Tebow.
Okay.
The sewer department, um, I believe we discussed a little bit
Right.
In, uh, in the beginning, uh, presentation.
Mm-huh.
And I'll have Mr. Tebow go through the, um, line items there.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Uh, as we had discussed at, uh, one of the previous meetings, um, the manager has proposed, and I have brought the recommendation to him, that we have a one-point-oh FTE that would serve as a, um, half-time administrator of the sewer program, and a half-time financial analyst for the finance department. Um, within the budget book, there's an indication of what, um, the individual would be tasked with, um, for example, preparing annual operating budgets, initial approval of all sewer-related expenditures, works with the sewer engineering consultant to develop bid specifications for major purchases, properly advertises bids, makes award recommendations, prepares, monitors vendor contracts, coordinate all sewer-related activities, among the town engineer, sewer clerk, tax assessor, tax collector, finance department, sewer engineering consultant, prepare sewer assessments and sewer use fees in accordance with local and state laws, prepare, prepare various legal notices, technical documents, reports, and recommendations, maintains communications and good working relationships with state agencies, local officials, regional community representatives, consultants, and the public to coordinate ongoing and future projects, resolves customer service requests and concerns. So, and you go to the actual budget, budget itself on the next page.
We have, uh, roughly, uh, forty-five thousand dollars, that's the, the one person and all the benefits, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be full-time FTE with the benefits, half coming from the, Treasury Department, and the other half being paid for on this, uh, proposed sewer department, uh, with very small expense lines for travel and
Right.
Office supplies.
So, again, that one person, is it, um, double the amount for working in the finance department and then working here, or is that the total amount?
The total amount, so, uh, for each department, the, the salary would, is approximately, um, just over seventy thousand dollars, so that, half that cost would be borne by the finance department, the other half, other half borne by this proposal.
So, again, it's thirty-five thousand and thirty-five thousand?
Yes, sir.
I, I, all right, just wanted to ask, and obviously sorely needed, uh, to help, uh, obviously get the sewer program, uh, straightened out and, and to help you with all the, uh, work that your office does. So, any, uh, any questions on this, uh, section? The forty-five thousand dollar one? If, if not, uh, I think we can go to the next one, which is Parks and, Parks and Rec, um...
It just...
Nine-ten, yep.
One second, Kevin, just one more, I didn't know we were done with you, but, um, what happened with the getting a generator for Town Hall? I mean, it's been, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, we had the money, and I thought you had money left over from DHS, or do they have a generator we can put on Town Hall?
No, the generator is gonna be utilized at the project, uh, the reason why we don't have a generator is 'cause it was not, taken out of our, not funded through the capital budget. We have some money, but it's, the generator for Town Hall was in the capital, and the last two years it's been not funded, so, that's the reason why we don't have it.
You had money allocated, right?
We have a portion, we have a portion left over from DHS, not enough for the needs. Part of what the money I, was taken out was to do an electrical study for this building, uh, so that we knew to have it sized correctly, which is like thirteen thousand, five hundred to do that study, uh, that was taken out. Uh, Mr. Wazika indicated he believes he needs around four hundred kilowatts, uh, for the run, the Town Hall and the library. Uh, we don't have that much money, uh, in the, in the budget for purchasing one. We've been keeping an eye out for anything that's used on the online, and that's what I think we came to the council for, to allow us to use that money and be able to purchase if something comes up in a very quick range, we only have a few days to bid on it. There's not been anything to that, I look at it every time that, that, those bids come out, there hasn't been anything for that size with the, the right age and many amount of hours on it, so.
Okay.
That's why you don't have one.
We missed one by ten dollars, because we, this is the limit of our ten thousand purchase, and it actually went, they outbid it by ten dollars.
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars, ten dollars, had low hours on it, great grab, and we, we lost out on the bid for ten bucks.
And that's why we came back to you folks.
Okay.
That's a shame.
You couldn't have put ten bucks in, you spent more than on cigars, my jeez.
And have you thought about doing another surplus sale?
We, we definitely have, uh, and we're planning on, when the weather finally breaks, this, later on this spring, is, uh, come back to the, the town manager and say, this is what we have to come up with, uh, whether or not Parks or any other departments, whether the police, Parks and Recreation, and our department, we have a few vehicles, uh, older vehicles now that we're not gonna utilize for repairs that we can send out to the surplus, but, uh, it's not like it was the first time.
When you have vehicle repairs, would it be something that is not, uh, for instance, you have a lot of mileage, you have a lot of hours on an engine, can you just replace an engine? I mean, it's gotta be less expensive than a four-million-dollar truck.
Most of the vehicles that we're talking about, we have two vehicles up on the hill, which we are backup, we have two older backup trucks right now that are nineteen-nineties, the two, the green and, and yellow ones that you see, we've kept those two, 'cause each one of those are part trucks for those two trucks to keep them on the road. Uh, we just spent, you know, over eight hundred dollars just to replace a radiator, I wonder, 'cause you, they're not built anymore, they had to go across country to find one. The parts, it's, it's the rotting, it's, it's the, it's the salt that eats these things apart, it's not just replacing an engine.
We, we did replace the engine for the Sprinter van.
That one there, we did, yes, but that's not out plowing all the time, so, yes, and we do, we do replace where we have to, uh, on, uh, smaller vehicles, but we did not, but we do not replace just a, and, and, we would if it was just an engine issue, but usually, the, the Terry, because of age, fifteen to twenty years old, is because of salt.
Do we wash the trucks every day when they come in? Under, like, the undercarriage gets washed?
We don't, that's been in the capital budget for the last few years, about an under, underwashed system that gets in there and blows up and re- and reutilizes the same water, but again, that's been not funded either, so, we have, they, they are washed, but they can only get so far, 'cause it's, it's not underwater, undercarriage system is not, is in place. So, yeah, I, believe me, I would, if we're gonna, if the town is gonna invest in, in the future about investing in our infrastructure, that type of in, uh, investment is only gonna save our trucks for the lifetime of twenty years, rather than starting to rot out at fifteen years, so, even though it's a, a little pricier at the beginning, it, all vehicles, whether it be police cars, uh, to- all the town vehicles, we could even have the buses come over and pay to, to utilize those underwashed systems that, everything needs to have those things clean, that's why you go to a car wash, 'cause it gets the undercarriage.
Yeah, right.
And without that, we're, we're only extending the, the, the pain.
Okay, thank you.
It's all about money.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, nine-ten, uh, Parks and Rec. Good evening. All right, I, uh, we have the two pages in front of us, I guess, uh, manager recommends, uh, Raina, uh, one million, two hundred and five thousand from your request of one million, two sixty-five.
A difference of forty-seven thousand.
What's that?
A difference of forty-seven thousand.
Right, yeah, all right, I, I got thirty-nine, eight-seventy, but I'm, I'll go with your method. Maybe the figures here are wrong. Overall, up three point four-two percent. What's new or anything different on this budget allocation this year?
We had to take certain things away. We had to take away our property maintenance budget by eighteen hundred dollars.
Property maintenance.
Mm-hmm. We had to decrease the length of our beach season by approximately twenty-plus days. We did not, originally, I put in for pay increases for returning summer camp and park patrol and maintenance workers that are seasonal. Unfortunately, I had to decrease those numbers to what it was last year. And I also cut things like heaters for the garage and education and certain safety education for my maintenance staff. And, yeah. And then we also don't have enough right now to pay for things like Porter Johns or other necessities, unfortunately. An increase you might see is from our personnel, just because we have more senior staff in our maintenance positions. So that comes with an increase.
Okay. Again, the, as I have in front of me, the approved budget for FY eighteen was one million one sixty-five. And again, the difference is about forty thousand dollars, right? From last year to recommended this year.
Right.
It's expensive, obviously, everybody likes Recreation, Parks and Rec. How do you raise more money? Is it more on camp fees or more on this or more on that?
We're applying for
I mean, that's one department can raise revenue.
Right, we're applying for grants. I try not to raise the fees for our programs to serve the entire community, but there are grants and other funding sources, of course.
Grants are good, but when they're not available, you know, you have a, a great turnout, and you're right, if you, it's not always easy to raise fees, but versus, you know, having to cut programs out, sometimes you raise them because you want them to keep going. And again, everything's going up. Have they been raised lately or the last year or since you've been here or no?
Slightly.
Slightly, okay. All right, just a question for the future down the line, because more and more people are moving in. Every time a new development goes up in town, the houses are sold before they're finished. So people are coming in, and obviously, you know.
We try to offer programs for different people within the community, so everyone can have access to recreation.
Right.
So I can have something at a higher price end versus a lower price end.
You know, you do a great job, and obviously, it's challenging. Any questions, yes, Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments to make. I had the opportunity in the last month or so to tour the facility and see some of the needs. In fact, one of them is on our agenda tonight, and hopefully, that will pass. But you just stated that your property maintenance was deleted from the budget.
It was cut by eighteen hundred dollars, which is less than what we received last year. So last year, we received fifteen thousand six hundred, and this year, we're receiving fourteen thousand eight hundred.
What mine is that?
Property maintenance.
Two forty-eight.
Two-four-eight.
And then, so far, we've actually had a transfer funds from one line item to this item because of how much maintenance is needed, because we have older facilities.
I have, I think all of us council members received a letter with some safety concerns from, from, you know, little leagues and stuff, oh, some of the fields need some work. And I'm just concerned that that really needs to be addressed, and I know you're doing your best with the limited budget, but I, I certainly don't want to open ourselves up to any liability if anybody happens to get hurt because of lack of, you know, our part of keeping the field, you know, the field safe, so.
And my staff is working tirelessly to make sure it is safe. However, when we're taking funds away from our most needed areas, that's when the issue arises.
Well, I realize too that you've had the same amount of staff for the last twelve years, and we've increased by a lot of parks and miles of bike path and so on, so.
Right, we have over five miles of bike path, I believe it's seven point two. We have over two dozen playfields, we have green space that we need to mow and maintain. We have garbage collection twice a week, and it's, could be up to like four hundred cans for several months because of all the leagues and the tournaments and the use of our fields. So we have a lot of property, we also do the town gym at the annex. We have our building, the teen center. And so our staff of essentially five maintenance people, not including our lead mechanic and our park foreman, is cleaning, doing custodial work. They're doing the mowing, they're doing the garbage collection, doing the field maintenance. So they, I mean, they can't even take a break during the summer. So we try to do as, the best we can do, but we are limited as far as resources, which is why I put in some extra money for more seasonal help maintenance. Unfortunately, I had to lower it a little bit, and I kind of adjusted it so we can get at least someone in for another twenty hours a week for three months. But again, that doesn't really help, that might help for summer, but what about, you know, fall ball and all our other programs and activities during that time? So it's, it's going to be very difficult.
Well, that's my point. I mean, I think your department is one that really can't be caught. I mean, we have a lot of issues. I stated with Guy LaFaye, bless his soul, who's former director, that when we were getting the bike path in the Greenway, that it's great if garbage, if you walk down towards the West Warwick Green Path, there's a big difference, you can tell you're going into West Warwick. I don't want that reputation for college, I want to make sure that our Greenway and our bike path looks like it belongs to college. And I always stated to him, if we can't handle it and maintain it, don't take it, you know, from the state.
I mean, our equipment is old, which is why I'm going from the council soon with another item. And again, we just don't have the resources other time to do that. And again, we do the best we can do, but, you know, it's limited.
Yeah, and there's no doubt, you're doing a great job with the resources you have. And I think my point is, we really need to consider funding a little more money to the, to the Parks and Rec Department, because, I mean, it's, it's an outstanding Parks and Rec department.
Thank you.
And I know, I, I took a walk through the Guy LaFaye Center, the floor is disgusting. I mean, you know, it needs to be all redone. If somebody, and we do a lot of dances, adult functions, if somebody trips on a tile because it's not, now, we're going to open ourselves up to some serious lawsuits.
And we have programs essentially Monday through Sunday, either community groups using our facility or own programs that we run, and then our, I know you've been to our events, there's over a thousand, fifteen hundred people that are now attending, so that's a lot of wear and tear. And we bought just some tiles to replace one as needed, but that's not, again, that's just fixing it slowly. We need like an overhaul.
And I understand you're doing the best you can, and I appreciate it, because it is, you know, a great department. But, I mean, when you've got to come in front of us to, you know, try to get a lawnmower that's twenty-five years old and keep with all this mowing and work you've got to do, we need to do better. Sorry, we need to do better, as far as us giving money to you, your department.
And I know it's similar to what it was last year or the year before, but that wasn't properly maintaining our facilities. So that's something to keep in mind as well. And they keep getting older and older and being used, and, well, you understand.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. You just have to inform your brother which division he loses money, so we can send more money going to Recreation. I know, it's up three point four-two percent. Obviously, we'd all like to give you a five percent increase, but every agency is looking for more money, that's for sure. Continue thinking about maybe raising some more revenue as best you can.
Well, that revenue is now going towards some of our maintenance equipment that we need, so it's not in our operating budget or in our impact fees, which we can't unuse anymore. So the money I raise for programs is now going to have to buy mowers and trucks and refuse items. So now I'm going to have to go out to the community and raise more funds, which I can do, but again, it's more time taken away from programs and maintenance and everything else as well.
I mean, Mr. President, we have, oh, my district, there's a playground that had to be torn down because it was too unsafe, and there's no money to refurnish, and that's the neighborhood that needs one right up the street.
My son's neighborhood too, on Hunter's Crossing, had to be taken down.
I think there's still holes in the ground that kids could trip on and get hurt.
So there were shards, and, you know, a lot of community members reach out to me, Raina, how could we help? But I can't ask them to pay fifty thousand dollars, some say like, I'd like to do memorial piece, and they're very concerned about their children, of course, having somewhere to play in the leagues, having some other activity to occupy their children. I am applying for grants right now, that being said, it's, you know, that doesn't always come through because other, it's a very competitive market.
We got it. Okay. We'd all like to send more money. Any other questions on, on Rec, Parks and Rec? Okay, well, thank you for coming out tonight, and good luck this spring, if the weather ever cooperates. The next several months is an opening day on Saturday. We'll, we'll see you there. All right, next, Human Services. I guess that's the next order, isn't it, not? Nine-twenty-five, Mr. Robillard, thanks for staying with us. Mr. Waters, you have any initial comments, or should we just turn it over to Mr. Robillard?
You can turn it over to him. I will say that there's a large section of the budget that is state aid, and
Okay.
Can't mess too much with that.
All right.
On that, Mr. Robillard, your budget, he wasn't here for the record, he wasn't here for his budget, so this is what he's been inherited.
Right. Well, so you hit the ground running, and this is what we have in front of us, and I guess you have the same in front of you.
Yes, sir.
What can you tell us?
I can tell you that the, the reduction, the major reduction, we had a, an assistant, social work assistant
Yep.
who since left, and we're not refilling that position.
Okay.
So we, we have that major expense out of our budget for this year.
Okay. All right. So I see the overall is minus five point nine-two, six percent approximately. Manager recommend seven seventy-three. I guess the department head requested seven ninety-two. But you're saying that that might wash out with the position that won't be filled?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
And with our relocation,
Yes.
I think that's like such an impact on, on what you see in front of you too.
Yep.
So it's very fluid.
Right.
Even though the budget is solid, it's very fluid on how that expense is going to get incurred as we go forward, so.
I know the town, all, all divisions are going to try to do the best they can to, to get it done. And actually, what we learned tonight or this morning is encouraging for, you know, going forward.
Very encouraging.
Maybe it'll end up helping out a little bit financially.
That's my hope, and be able to keep those services, you know, intact and growing as well.
All right. Questions of the other council members regarding the Department of Human Services? Yes, Mrs. Bacon?
I do professional services. It looks like that's new, it's eleven thousand?
Yeah, we actually moved a major portion of those services all onto, into a single heading. And that would be the plowing services, the weekly trash pickup and pest control, Cintas, the safety issues, all into that, into one line item. So there's some pieces that have been just moved to that by, from my understanding, by, for a process.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything at all?
I just, quick question. If we do the move, the cleaning and sanitary supplies, will you need that?
Yes, those are still part of the, the need. One of the reciprocal agreements we would have with, with them is our custodian would be cleaning common areas, like the restrooms and, and that's kind of part of, you know, how we've developed this option to provide those in-kind services.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Long night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out and staying, and good luck the next month or two.
Thank you.
Never mind the next year coming up. All right, next, Library, nine-thirty. Is Mrs. Blanchett here? Yes, she is. Good evening. How'd you get to be the last department on tonight's agenda? How'd that happen here? Okay. What can you tell us, Mrs. Blanchett?
There is not much new in the budget.
Okay.
It's a very small increase. No new line items, no new staff positions. We're lucky to have grant aid, and so all of our new things come out of that. Only asking for seven hundred and three dollars.
Yours is always the easiest with a lot of state grants, it's always the easiest.
It's because I have grant aid, I have to say.
Yes, right, right.
I will say that, you know, should you decide to do cutting, just be mindful that I need to at least be level funded in order to receive grant aid, which is over two hundred and thirty thousand for fiscal nineteen, so we would be lost without that.
Well, I know you do a super job. You got a lot of faithful residents that, all ages, and just continue to do great work. Is there any revenue raising that, besides grants, that the library, outside of the library sales, which we always come up with the used books?
You, um
It's fantastic deals.
The town does get our fine money, which is about twenty thousand dollars a year.
They get what, please?
You get our fine money.
Fines.
Fines.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, which is about twenty thousand a year, that goes to the town.
So you're helping to pay for other departments then?
There you go.
Gotcha.
Whatever we can do to help.
How much is one from nineteen ninety-three?
Yeah.
You know, this Saturday, there's going to be an amnesty day.
Amnesty, yeah, get those books in. Put that in the Times. Amnesty Day, Saturday. All right. Well, any other questions on Mrs. Blanchett? If not, thank you.
Okay.
And good luck again this summer season and the new fiscal year. So as far as the items, the departments that were listed April ninth, we've covered, oh, oh, my God.
Planning was covered last meeting.
What's that?
Planning was last week.
Yeah, we did that last week.
I knew I yellow-lined it for some reason. Thanks for reminding me.
It was a typo.
That, that was, yeah, we just, actually, was it listed twice, was it?
Yes, it was.
Our, our planning director said, if you'd like to interrogate her, I can question her.
All right. So next, we have C-one. Discussion on a lease purchase for a refuge truck for Parks and Recreation. You didn't leave.
I like it up here.
All right.
So I have our lead mechanic with us today.
Good evening.
So our, we collect throughout the year, the Greenway on fields with the leagues, our town parks, approximately two to four hundred garbage cans weekly. Unfortunately, the truck that we're using now to collect the garbage, it's unsafe, and we need to replace it. Currently, we're just using can lifting the garbage into a truck, which is very time-consuming. So I'm going to let Jay speak about the condition of our current vehicle and why it needs to be replaced immediately.
Okay. You're on, sir.
How are you?
We're fine.
This picture that we're looking at right here, it's loud. You can see the body's twisted on this truck. The problem with the truck is, is that the body's twisted on it because the apparatus that was put on previously was, wasn't really designed for this, this vehicle. This truck is a, it's a two thousand and eight. It's our second newest vehicle that we have. And with the, with the weight on the side of it and the tailgate, it has a lift tailgate, it also, this truck is, is very close to being overloaded. There's, there's no way that you could, you could fill the back of this truck up and be legal with the amount of weight that, that you have on it. That's the apparatus right there that you're looking at, that it takes the can and tips it over and dumps the garbage into the, into the truck. That whole piece along the side there, that piece right there weighs approximately a thousand pounds. That's, that's a half a ton right there, just in that, not counting the tipping mechanism, which is another three hundred pounds. So that's fifteen hundred pounds roughly that, that you're dealing with there. The underneath of the truck, I took the picture from the section underneath, that's the body that's, it's tilted so much that it's not hitting the frame rail on one side. So that's the body that's, that's twisted. So that's the body that's, that's twisted. On the next picture? This right here is your drive shaft. And the piece that's coming down, that's almost next to your drive shaft, that's part of the body where the hoisting mechanism that dumps it is. So what's happening here is that the body is so twisted that, that it's hitting the drive shaft. And the vehicle being so long, there's flexibility within that, within it. So how to fix that, how to, like I said, it's a 2008. The, the engine, I've done quite a bit of stuff to the engine. That's totally separate than, than the body. It's, it's an old vehicle. It's a beat-up vehicle, and it's, it's lived its life. It's, it's not going to make it this summer.
So I mean, our main, our main concern is that when people, when our staff goes to collect the garbage, that truck will actually fall on them. So as I said, right now, I have, I'm not allowing any of our staff to use that machine to pick up garbage. And I did put it in my capital improvement for this upcoming fiscal year that we need a refuse truck. I didn't realize the, the state it was in, but it's definitely needed ASAP as the Leagues and the play season has begun.
And Mr. President, if I may, in my tour of the, of the facility, I did see this truck, and they showed me, it's so far out of rack, it's actually unsafe. And then when they, they have pieces of four-by-fours underneath to make it, you know, so, so when it lowers, you know, to be safe. When that truck lifts up, you know, the whole, whole body twists, it really was not designed for that. Would you be able to utilize the truck if that apparatus was taken off? Or is it still with, or is it better off just to be traded in towards, can they do that? Or does that go to a sale, like we, you know?
We can try. The problem is that we have so many, we're limited in the vehicles that we have. And as I said, this is, besides when we just purchased last season, this is our newest vehicle. So this is a workhorse for us. So it's very difficult to get rid of something when we don't have a plan to replace it anytime soon.
And that vehicle absolutely is unsafe to use, you know, absolutely. If anything, it should be, disconnect the lift on it and just use it as a stakebody. And, you know, it's, it is unsafe. I have saw it.
So what we're doing now is I'm working with the lead mechanic, I'm working with the park foreman, and I'm seeking the expertise of the Director of DPW to see what kind of vehicle we actually need. I don't want to, I mean, this was purchased in 2016. I don't want to make an error. I want this next vehicle to last for 20 years. So, but it, we're working on it to get it replaced soon.
When did you say it was purchased?
You said 2016. You meant 2008?
The truck was purchased.
Oh.
However, that tipper you see was something that was purchased
I see that was 2016.
under a former director, and was put on. And that's something that we've been modifying since I started coming here.
Oh.
Also, that, that truck wasn't purchased brand-new. It was, it was used when they purchased that.
Okay, so it was purchased, used in '16, and then retrofitted with this arm?
With that, right.
And it never should have been retrofitted with that arm.
And how much did we pay for the truck in '16?
A little over $9,000. Uh, the tipper?
The truck and the tipper, yes.
The, I don't know about the truck from 20, but I do know
That's '08, the truck.
The tipper was just over $9,000, and that was taken out of impact fees.
And we don't know the price of the truck?
No.
Will you utilize the tipper on another truck, or will you get a different style truck?
We would get a different style of truck, and again, that's something I'm going to be talking to the Director of DPW with and lead mechanic, just to make sure we get the right piece of equipment.
So that type is
But we can always sell it and then use it for, to help pay for the cost of this equipment since it'll be coming out of my program fees.
Thank you.
So, so again, we don't have any figures right now. It's just a discussion that it needs to be done.
We anticipate anything because we started looking
Right.
between, anywhere from probably around between 50 and 80, which is what I put in capital improvement. There's vehicles that are older that, but they wouldn't qualify for that lease-to-purchase program. And again, I'd rather buy something that's going to last us 20 years and not keep having to modify old pieces of equipment that can lead to danger.
So, so Mr. Tebow, this would be possibly, if approved, a purchase and then a five, six, something near lease to pay for it?
Yes, sir. I talked with the, the company we do, have done all the lease purchases with, and before they can give us a quote on
We got to tell them what we want.
Yeah, we need to provide the make, model, year.
Right, I got it. Okay. Any, any last minute or last questions regarding the, the need? I, I guess we all agree there is a need, and we just have to get the details and find out the cost and go from there as soon as we can.
That's what we're doing now. Absolutely, priority.
Right. Yep.
Mr. President, I look like this is a discussion or an action. Are we looking to give them permission to, to move forward with it? Is that what, we have to make some kind of action, or is this just discussion this evening?
Until they have a final cost of how much it'll be, the idea was just to demonstrate the need for it tonight.
Okay, great.
And then at the next council meeting, they'll, they'll come forward with a request for funding.
The facts.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Following the agenda now, we have public comment under D, general public comment for those wishing to make a comment. Yes, Senator, see in the back there. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Town Council. A couple of things on the public comment, first of all
Excuse me, Senator Raptakis, Coventry.
2080 Newsnick Hill Road.
Thank you, all right.
I'll take my senatorial hat on.
There you go.
Put my taxpayer hat on if you want. A couple of things, I know Representative Serpa is here also in the audience. Back on December 18th, we had a delegation meeting here, and I'm requesting that we schedule as soon as possible, probably next three, four weeks, around the first week of May, another meeting. There's a lot of issues that are pending. We've got numerous pending legislation, bills that are going to affect this community. And also, it's a good time to figure out what the state budget is going to look like for aid to education, especially the meeting you had earlier with the teachers of this community. So I think it's very important that we try to schedule a meeting. I would say our break is coming up on the 16th. We come back on the 23rd, probably the first week of May. And we had discussed that back when we were here the week before Christmas. So I would recommend that we try to meet as soon as possible with the delegation.
All right. Again, request heard, and then we'll just have to come up with a date. We've got a lot of other things on the table, but we certainly want to hear how much extra money we're going to be getting for the school department.
Right, plus, plus you have numerous bills that do affect this community.
Okay.
Second, last, last week, I wasn't here, but on the agenda, on your Town Council Agenda, Section C, Number 10, which was dated on March 26th, you had an issue regarding discussion on Brady Sullivan Harris Mills with the Building Department officials. And that was, I believe, removed from the agenda because there wasn't enough information, but it was placed on the agenda, I believe, for discussion. I'm here to request that that is, that item be put back on the agenda. I've had many calls and conversations with my constituents that live in Harris Mills and Anthony regarding Brady Sullivan. I've had conversations also with the Health Department and also other state agencies to find out what's going on, where I'm not sure what town department would be in communications. I'm going to be pending a letter to either, might be the Building Inspector, how we got to this point of having these two structures in our town that were approved, and then we have many residents that are having some serious health issues. The other issue I'm going to pursue is if there's a violation of state law, whether the historical tax credits that were given to this mill owner was used improperly. I mean, I just can't believe that we've got two locations with many, many residents that have health concerns. So I want to find out which town agency we can be addressing these issues and find out if there's been any issues that have been brought up that affecting the residents of our community here, regardless of both those buildings. Another issue is the Lake Tyog. Lake Tyog, Mr. President, and Representative Serpa is also here. We're trying to figure out when the correspondence with Congressman Landy is going to take effect. I mean, you received that letter. I was back here back in February. You received the letter from Congressman Landy asking this town to communicate with him so he can move forward and contact FEMA so we can address the problem of the flood zone.
Right.
Lastly, and then I could take all the, if there's any questions, of the sewer update. I know that Citron Cooperman's report is due the end of April, which is, I believe, in two weeks. So is that going to be forthcoming? And as you heard earlier, the Order General has sent out a letter to our delegation, to the members of this council, pursuing what, what avenue he's going to pursue regarding the sewer, Coventry Sewer Program. So I'm sure you did receive a letter from the Order General. I do have copies.
I think we all got copies of it, yeah.
Okay, great. So we need to know if
Once, once we get an answer, then we can let people know.
Right, but is Citron Cooperman coming, I thought it was the end of April they were going to provide this town
Do we have an update, Mr. Order General?
with a report? And that's all?
They've, they've just, I believe they've received all of the information that they've requested from the town to do their research. They're going to be issuing a
You're talking about the Order General or Citron Cooperman?
Citron Cooperman.
Citron Cooperman.
The Order General's relying on Citron Cooperman.
Right.
And they'll be coordinating with Citron Cooperman for their information.
But the $37,000 that, that you authorized, that taxpayers paid in this community, isn't that report separate? That's supposed to be due the end of April? This way, the residents can see that?
I'm not sure what the Order General is doing specifically. The information that I have from the Order General was he was supposed to reach out to the Citron Cooperman representatives that we have and coordinate meetings and discussions with them.
While they're doing their report, but I thought their report was due on April, the end of April.
End of April, correct.
Okay, so is that report forthcoming?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay, so we should get that by the end of the month or beginning of May to get a copy for the public to see?
Correct.
Okay, good.
They, they will be coming before the Town Council, before they release anything
Excellent, okay.
To do an update for the council.
And also, again, it's already the mid-April. Going back to Lake Tyog, I think it's very, very important that we reach out to the Congressman.
We, we have, okay. Thanks, Senator.
Well
Mr. Gorm can fill you in on that, all right?
We'd like to have correspondence, Mr. President, because you told me that two months ago, and it's two months later, and we're still back to square one.
No, we've, you're, you're wrong, but I don't want to go into
When I see the letter, when you send us a letter and we see the evidence to represent Serpa night, then I'll believe it.
There has been communication, Senator. Again, I don't want to go into details, but you're wrong. Mr. Gorm, do you want to speak, speak on that?
I just wanted to let the Senator and Representative Serpa know, if they're here on the Tyog matter.
Thank you.
Just last week, I did reply to Congressman Landy's office. I wrote to Stuart Malick, who had sent the letter, and I just needed some clarification on what might qualify
Updated.
For the, the, he had, he said he had, he needed updated data
Updated, yeah.
or new flood control capabilities that could potentially be a reason to initiate a map change with FEMA. And I asked him to clarify exactly what we would, what we could
Present.
present to him
Right.
to, to do that. So we have been on top of that. That was on April 3rd. I haven't heard back from Mr. Malick yet, but I suggested a meeting if that might help. So we, we are right on top of that, I can tell you. Thank you.
And just to add to that
Please do.
The town does not own the flood gate, nor do we own the dam. We just own the land underneath. The dam is owned by private party, and there's no record of who owns the, the flood control gate. There is a, the Lake Tyog Association does operate it and is responsible for manually lifting it when it floods.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, sir. Come right up.
Wayne Delude, 26 Audubon Lane. I'll, I'll try and be brief. Tonight, you'll be discussing the gun range language for the ordinance, but you're not discussing the abutters radius. Has that been dropped, or is that an oversight, or?
I think it's in there, but I'm not the expert to know.
It's an oversight.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Right.
And this evening, will you be voting to advertise, or?
I, I'm not sure if we're going to be voting to advertise or not. Not tonight.
It's a first, first reading, isn't it?
Right.
Well, you've already discussed it.
I, I wasn't here last meeting. I guess I was being discussed last meeting when I was in Virginia.
What constitutes a quorum?
Can I, do you want me to?
Well, there was a quorum. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Gorm.
Okay. Just to answer your question, sir. There are two, there's a, the Zoning Enabling Act, which is a state law that we have to comply with, but we also have to comply with our own charter when we do zoning amendments, which means we have to have a first reading. That's typically the first step. That's what's on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, because it's worded The same way it was worded for the 26th Agenda.
Right, but the council has a practice, protocol, whatever you want to call it, of first having a discussion before we do a first reading, because sometimes when they discuss things, they realize they either may or may not need to do an ordinance amendment for any type of thing, not just zoning. And they find that to be a very productive way of sort of weighing whether it's worth it to go forward with an ordinance, and it's allowed under the OMA, so they do it quite often. In this particular case, it looks like they're going ahead with it because it's on the agenda next.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, yes, sir. In the plaid shirts, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul McGrath, 91 Calverton Road. I'd like to address about the ordinance for changing the abutters.
Abutters, yep.
I'm concerned with the time that's given to the abutter to address the problem. You've given 10 days. If they mail it out on a Saturday night, you don't receive it until Monday night. You lose three days there. The final weekend, you lose another two days. So out of the 10 days, you have five working days to contact a lawyer, find a lawyer that's specific to your problem, meet with him, get a witness, expert witness, all within five working days. If we could address maybe changing it to 20 days or even 30, but 20 days, I'd be happy with 30 days. You know, the applicant has three or four months to prepare his package, where the abutter gets five working days to try to refute it. That's my point. Thank you very much.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, out there. Good evening.
Good evening. Diane Cowell, 8 Highwood Drive. I stayed from the teacher part of the meeting because I noticed on here F3, the resolution to reallocate funding from Briar Point Beach Gate to the purchase of a new lawnmower. I was at last year's financial town meeting, and this one topic took up a lot of time. If I remember right, it was over 10 minutes of discussion about the gate, the importance of the gate. The police got up and talked about how it was really a safety issue and how important it was to them. The people in that neighborhood were pro and against, but a lot of discussion happened. And the vote was very specific that we were going to spend $25,000 on a gate that was so important. And now tonight, you want to trade it in for a lawnmower? It makes no sense to me whatsoever. And I just, because I was at that financial town meeting, I felt strongly that, yeah, how can we do this when it was so important less than a year ago? Why is it not so important now? And even more so, it was funded. Why hasn't it already been put up? So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, yes, in the back. Good evening.
Good evening. Susan Payle, et al., 4 Whistle Lane, Coventry. Um, I think the amendments that Carolyn Wells, that were presented when you were not here two weeks ago, they looked great. I hope you move forward. I strongly believe that an outdoor gun range should not be allowed in any zones, that's including RR3 and RR5. I know I've had some other conversations with people, but I want to go on record that this town needs to take the action. Um, Senator Raptakis, at the December meeting, asked, "Does Coventry need a zoning ordinance? Do we need something at the General Assembly to just say, 'No outdoor gun ranges in Coventry'?" And there was a round of applause, thought it was great. But, Mr. Gorm, you said, at that time, the application was pending, the one with the gun shop owner. So couldn't do anything back in December because that application was pending.
No, no.
That's not true.
You said we couldn't do anything back then.
Didn't need to.
I said we couldn't do anything to affect the application that was pending.
Correct, okay. So now, that application is not pending. So I am begging, once again, for you to act on this. And the amendments that were put forward, do the first reading, get the advertisement, get the process going. There's, people are getting frustrated as taxpayers with all the delays. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, ma'am, in the rear.
Hi. Diane Jordan, 600 Tom Farm Road. Um, I just wanted to say, as a resident of Coventry, and I live on Tom Farm Road, for 26 years, it was frightful to even think of having a commercial gun range in a residential area. And, um, I hope we can move forward on this as soon as possible to get the amendment changed back to the way it was. Um, we, we just could never live there with guns firing consistently. And after that application was brought forward, and I think you all had got to see, you know, how we felt and what was happening to us, just to even think, and our concerns. Um, and, uh, hopefully, like I said, you know, we can get it changed back as soon as possible.
Okay.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, yes, sir. Mr. G.
Good evening.
Good evening. Ron Gisarelli, 50 Harrington Road. Thank you, Mr. President, for having the opportunity to address the town council, the offices, and our town solicitor and staff. I come today, I thought I was coming on two issues, but I, I received about 10 to 12 phone calls from my experience in the past as the union rep for the town employees, which our union still represents them. I've been retired a long time, but I got a lot of calls about the school that we ended up having to close down because of contamination in the past, and, um, with children in there, and, uh, staff using it for a, a storage area, and it was very contaminated. I had to get OSHA involved, and we're going to try to refurbish the building and bring it back, but the cost was too great, so we ended up taking down the school. But unfortunately, at the beginning, again, I was all alone on that issue. Everybody said it couldn't be done. I got OSHA involved, and the rest is history because it wasn't safe for the children that were being, and then you're allowed to use the basketball courts, nor the employees that were storing our materials in town there. So I'd like to be involved in that, if possible, because of all the experience I've had with my international union and learning about what we call sick buildings. And the most things you've got to worry about is our older buildings and the schools, because I was in 19 states dispatched by our international president, Washington, when I was on international staff for seven years, to different states to check on sick buildings where our staff were getting sick, and it's not known by a lot of the public because they're in and out of buildings. And that can be kind of true with some of the children as well, but I would say because of the safety of the children and the staff, that we ought to keep a very, very close eye on the flat roofs on old buildings and public buildings, very often to check, because the mold is unseemable and goes into the walls, and the walls breathe in the ceiling, and air can do whatever you've got going on. What happens is people get sick and nobody realizes why. And it happens usually many, many times without anyone knowing, uh, why it's happening, because a lot of the inside interior partitions are loaded with mold if they're not, if they're not drilled or checked at the roof levels just below. So I'm trying to be helpful by saying that for the sake of our children, again, and the staff. Keep a very close eye on all flat, flats, flat buildings, including, we've had some problems with our town hall in the past, which I brought up in the past many years back. Um, the other two issues, of course, uh, the sewers. Since I've been around Tyog Lake since I was eight years old in 1946, uh, I can be very helpful with the events that have happened around, uh, around the lake with sewer systems that we didn't have, and septic systems, which we helped a lot of the older people, you know, kind of confidentially straighten them out because we wanted the lake to be as clean as possible. So I can be very helpful on that. So I'd like to be involved with, uh, with any meetings with regard to the sewer meetings. I haven't kind of offered before. I've been in the background a little bit because a lot of our members are involved with Jamie LeBlanc and, uh, and what's going on there. We just want something fair that people can afford to change their systems and run, and a means test of some kind, so maybe there's some way where they can pay off in the future, long-term, or maybe even the new owners take it over. The lake does need protection, but not to the point where, uh, uh, children that swim in there through Briar Point and the owners of the properties can't afford to pay for the sewers, Mr. President.
Okay.
So third issue.
Can you not get as close to the lake? You're echoing everything out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Too close.
Uh, the third issue, uh, is the flood zone. I've done a lot of research, even based on back in the 80s. I found out with some documents our Tyog Lake Association has, where the Army Corps of Engineers, which were involved in determining across the nation the types of lake streams and brooks, and they even indicated back in their documents in 80 that they came to the conclusion that it was a backed-up body of water, without saying the words to alarm people, an artificial body of water backed up for the purposes I mentioned before, back when there was more or less nobody living around the lake in the late 1800s, for purposes of the mill owners having backed up water in drought periods to be able to use their pumper trucks to put out fires. So I'm saying I'd like to be involved in that as well, if possible, with FEMA and Loma. So if you give me that opportunity, I'll be very fair, but I'd love to be involved because I think I can be helpful. Thank you.
I appreciate your, uh, offer, and, and again, Mr. Gorm had said he's been, uh, reaching out to Mr. Malek to find out what updated information would consist of, uh, and going from there on that particular topic. At flat roofs, I think everybody knows it's not a good thing. Uh, a lot of flat roofs are, not only in Coventry, but all over the state. Uh, schools were famous for putting on flat roofs. Not good, but, uh, they thought it was cost-effective and, and obviously live and learn, so. But thank you. Um, uh, anyone else for public comment before we move along for the regular agenda? Yes, ma'am, way in the back.
I'd like to ask you again, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you would put the Harris Mills issue back on the agenda.
Name, name and address for the record, please.
Betty Denise, 618 Main Street, Harris Mills. I moved into the state the 28th of April, but I've done a little homework, and I see here that we have, um, an order that was issued to Brady Sullivan to repair the building in April of 2017. The issue was ignored because they had seven days to, um, take care of the problem, and no one followed through. How can you issue something that has penalties for jail or for a fine, and you just ignore it? You just walk away from it and say, "Oh, okay, that's fine." So then I called the Board of Health, not their jurisdiction. Then I called the Housing Resource Commission. I asked for my certificate for lead. They don't have one for my apartment, but I have a lead test that Brady took, and it says, "I have lead in my apartment." How does this happen? I have no clue. I have a, um, blood test, um, that states that I have mold in my blood. Now, I'm not, not only speaking for myself, I'm speaking for everyone that is having an issue. And I really wish you would consider either coming there and figuring out what's going on, or telling us exactly what the route is we should take.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Yes. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Heather Varon. I live, uh, at Harris Mill, under a flat roof. And I just wanted to thank you for doing the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. That was wonderful. And also the prayer, part of that prayer you had said, um, you had, I quoted you actually, "Keep us all safe and do the right thing." I remember you saying that, and I'm asking you to do that at Harris Mill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, let's, uh, move along. Uh, next on the agenda, we have Resolutions F. Uh, I guess it's F1 is the first one that's coming up, and that would be, um, summer bus transportation. And Miss, Miss Blumenthal still with us?
Hello again.
God bless.
Um, so, uh, bus bid for our summer program and throughout the year. Uh, we had received two bids.
Excuse me one second. A little bit of, uh, noise from people exiting. All right, go ahead again, please.
So we received two bids for our summer program and for busing throughout the year, um, from Durham School Services, um, that's really, that's located in Situate, and then Ocean State Transit, that's located in Exeter. Um, we're going to be going with Durham School Services. Uh, it's a dollar less per hour, and they also don't charge for mileage like Ocean State does, which will help keep the cost low for the summer program. Uh, we checked the references. Um, they received rave reviews, um, and we checked their insurance. Everything pans out.
Okay, um...
Is this the same company we've used in the past?
We've used Ocean State in the past. Um, however, they raised their rate by a dollar per hour, and then, um, they're also charging, I believe, a dollar 25 for each mile, while the other bus company is just charging a flat fee of $50 per hour with no mileage.
Do you, uh, could I ask, uh, what other cities or towns use this bus company?
Um, we checked, I don't have it off, um, memory unfortunately, but we did check, um, several other communities.
Okay.
And they all gave positive remarks.
That's good to hear.
So I apologize that I don't remember the...
That's all right. That's all right. At least you've, uh, heard from several other communities.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, they're satisfied with Durham School Services out of Illinois.
I believe we've had safety issues with Ocean State in the past, haven't we?
There was one issue before I was here with a driver. Um, I don't want to go into details, but we had to get another driver to...
Oh, that was on the way, Boston trip, wasn't it?
I remember that.
Wasn't that on the way to Redzak?
But overall, they're a very good bus company, and they've been very good to us.
Maybe it was way back.
However, um, just trying to keep costs low for the community.
Well, we have the, uh, the resolution in front of us, yes. Uh, Mrs. Bacon?
Nick, have you looked over the contract? Because there was no contract with our, our packet. So I just want to make sure you've reviewed the contract. We don't have one.
Um, I... I have not. I don't, I don't have it either. But what, what we can do, and we've done this in the past, is you can approve it on the general terms that she has specified, subject to review by the solicitor for satisfactory contractual terms.
Okay.
And if I find it unsatisfactory, we'll just have to come back.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, because it, um, going forward, if we could just have the contract in.
They do, um, they have records of it. I can, do...
Yeah, it's just helpful that, you know, when councils, so when we...
Do you want me to send it, or?
We can work it out after.
Yeah, but I just, going forward in that, I just...
Does the town have the contract?
In the future...
Yeah, the town has the contract. That's...
Just submit it with your material to the packet.
It's, it's easier that way.
And I can...
Come in with the resolution, show the contract, and, uh, don't have to go hunting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, um, so with that specification, um, does anyone want to make a, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, um, once we will approve it, pending the contract is approved by our solicitor.
And actually, I'd like to make the motion on the verbiage that, uh, verbiage that Nick...
That's what I, that's what I meant by amendment. Okay, so, and seconded the same way, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, approved. Good luck with them. All right, uh, F2 is not vote, uh, F, F3, the resolution reallocating the capital funding. Um, what?
Like, this is what someone talked about earlier.
Yes, yes, this was it.
Would you like me to address that issue first?
That would be wonderful.
So I'm not going to not build the gate. I'm actually going to take it out of a different funding source. I'm going to take it out of my scrap metal fund, which has, uh, several thousand dollars in it. I got a quote from a local fencing company, and it's between $3,000 and $4,000. So I can still add a fence. I just will not be using it out of the capital funds, but I, um, I am still planning to put the fence up.
A gate, gate referring to, not necessarily a fence, right?
So how is that going to change our resolution?
I would actually like to talk to, I've heard different things from the community. I actually want to reach out to some of the community members who live surrounding that property and see what type of gate or fencing, or whatever they need there.
Right, so we don't, so we don't have to reallocate the funding at this point in time, is what you're saying?
Yeah, you, no, I do. I'm just to take the $3,000 to $4,000 out of a different funding source.
For the gate.
For the gate. But I still want to take the $25,000 for the capital improvement, because it's only to go towards the lawnmower. Is that...
Now, can that be... There's $25,000, I believe, from, uh, Bob can help me out a little bit here.
2017 approved capital funding, as approved at the Financial Town Meeting.
For, for capital funding for the gate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is that a legal concern, Mr. Solicitor? Because, uh, one, uh, resident said, "You can't understand how it could be changed," and, uh, I remember, uh, the matter of the gate and, uh...
Yeah, that was quite interesting.
... being a security matter, and...
Mr. President?
Yes.
I remember that too, and I believe it was over, where there was going to be a motorized gate.
Right.
Which is still putting up a gate, so I don't know what that falls into.
But the point being that this was an enormous discussion, and now it's, two years later, and we haven't done the gate, and now we find out it could only cost $3,000?
It's the different gate.
Versus 20, I understand that, but this...
Well, that's the big difference.
We, I mean, it was like, this gate had to happen, or, oh my God, the town would fall down. And all of a sudden, we never even bothered to do it. And now we're finding out we can re, we want to reallocate the money. Do we wonder why we get in trouble?
Well, I'm just going to answer the question.
Please do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, uh, even if it were a brief debate at the Financial Town Meeting, I think there is an issue. I'm, I'm aware of a case that says that, once it is earmarked as an expenditure in a certain regard at a Financial Town Meeting, it may not be within the powers of the council to completely abdicate the funding. I don't know what we're talking about here. Are we, uh, is, is there going to be any funding for the gate at all?
Yes, I'm just going to take it out of a different funding source, but it's not going to be the $25,000. It's going to be between $3,000 and $4,000.
The cost of the gate?
Correct.
She wants to use the $25,000 that was allocated by the, at the FTM for this really important gate to go to a lawnmower.
I understand.
So you're reallocating funds that the taxpayers voted on, right? So can, that doesn't sound kosher.
Um, I, I, our charter does give the town council the power to do that. I just haven't had this come up. It does. The council can reallocate funds, um...
Voted on by the taxpayers?
But I'm not sure if, when it is specific as it was in this particular case, where we actually had a motion at the Financial Town Meeting to allocate the funding to this very particular project, if it can be abdicated or changed or transferred. I, if I, I mean, how time-sensitive is this?
I mean, our lawnmower is from 1992, and we don't have enough to mow our fields. Um, so it's a priority.
I think what we're hearing is we're probably going to have to, huh?
I'm not sure we can do it.
Well, I think we're going to have to do some research on whether we can do it or not. And I know, uh, every week counts, because, uh, sooner or later, the grass is going to start growing, as cold it is, but we want to make sure we do it right.
Oh, I absolutely understand.
And if legally, we're not supposed to do it, then we better not. If we can do it, find a way, then we'll be found out by next Monday.
I was just trying to find a way to accommodate both needs, but whatever the council decides.
Right.
The accommodation is not really the point. It's... It's whether we can do it.
I understand.
I promise I will do it faster than the grass grows, that's all I can tell you.
For Monday, Mr. Tebow, did you have a comment, or was that just clearing your throat?
Raina.
I make no noise at all.
All right, sorry. I, I thought you were gonna add something, but, okay.
Hang on, I just have one quick question. When it comes before us again, could you give us some information on the lawnmower?
I mean, twenty-five. I have it here, so we do need a front mount John Deere lawnmower with the accessories, everything, it'll probably come to about twenty-one five hundred, plus an additional blower should be approximately five thousand. So we're looking at about twenty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, if you could provide that to council so we can see, you know, when it comes before us, because we just, that way we can look at it and review it.
Today was just to see if I can reallocate the funds, and then I would come before council again with different bids to make sure.
The bids, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you so much.
For the dollar amount. First, we gotta find out if we can do it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We just need to go buy this, table it, or what do we gotta?
Yeah, what, Mr. Gohm, do we table it for now, or just?
If you don't mind, until I can.
Right.
If you don't mind until I can verify, I know there's a case on this. I just need to know if our charter supersedes the case, that's really what it comes down to.
Motion to table, F3.
Okay, motion made to table, F3, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tabled, until next week. Okay, moving right along, F4. F4. Who's gonna speak on this one? Mr., Mr. McGee, okay.
Yes, I'm still here.
Hello. I knew you were still here.
Back in two thousand and twelve, the town entered to agreement with Cintas for the uniforms, a five-year contract which expired the end of December. We went out and looked at different, there's only two companies in this area, UniFirst and Cintas. UniFirst is located in, the clothes are laundered out of Portland, Maine. They would cost approximately fifty-five dollars a week more. We provided, the cost right now, we're paying Cintas for all our uniforms is four hundred and thirteen dollars and six cents a week. Under the new prices on the US Communities, it would be two hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-one cents for the same uniforms. That's a hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighteen cents per week savings. Over the year, that would save the town eighty-six hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-six cents. We're asking for this proposal to enter into a new agreement with Cintas for three years with two one-year options.
Okay.
And I factored in these savings into my budget. A three-year, yeah, it's on here, a three-year term with two one-year extensions, if the town is happy with that. And this is for the Public Works Department.
I'm always happy with the savings like that.
We're trying.
You, you dealt with this company, Cintas?
They've been dealing with it the last five years, they've been providing uniforms.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made to approve and seconded. Any discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Okay, F5. F5. Mr., oh, Ms. Wells. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Yeah, I'm doing fine, thanks. Thanks for asking.
All right, so we have a grant to paint the raid schoolhouse and make some repairs. And then we have a town match, so the total project would be about forty-one thousand dollars available. We went through a bid process, actually a couple of times, just to make sure we had our terminology correct. We got three proposals in response. The lowest bid was thirty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars from Blue Skies Construction and Design. So that's about nine thousand dollars lower than the actual project budgeted amount. I looked into the references, which were very good. They worked on the P-PAC, Providence Performing Arts, did all of their windows. They had nothing but good things to say about them. They also did a hundred-year-old cottage on the URI night campus, and also got very good response for being on time, on budget. And I talked to the state Historic Preservation and Heritage Commission, who was actually putting up the grant for this, and they also recommend Blue Skies. Low bidder, MBE, good reputation. So, that's what I'm bringing before you.
Okay, any other comments, or I guess that's it? Any questions from the council? I know that it, it does say that twenty-six thousand four hundred is gonna be granted to us, Rhode Island Historical Preservation, which is nice, it's not quite two-thirds of the total cost. The other fifteen comes out of, what, your budget?
Public Works.
Public Works budget, okay. All right, any questions, any comments on this?
Just a quick question, when do you think this project will begin, and when do you think it'll end?
Well, the grant has some requirements. Actually, I'm hoping it'll begin as soon as the weather is consistently warm. And it has to end by March twenty nineteen. But we actually anticipate it being maybe six to eight-week project.
Six to eight weeks?
Yeah, pretty quickly.
Any other, any other questions of any of the council members? Okay, do I have a motion to approve then? And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, may I suggest that we take a five-minute recess? We'll move on to the next section, so, thank you.
Why not?
Sorry, I'm happy to stand.
Hang in there.
It's only been four hours.
About five minutes, it has been four hours, and we'll be back in five. We said it at six. And yes, we did. It might have been them.
Takes a couple of weeks.
I don't know, but I'll find out. Thanks for bringing that up, 'cause it is them. I don't know. Hey, the spring, the spring cleanup, you remember last year? Who organized it, you know, picking up? It was DPW?
I gotta go clean up.
All right, 'cause they haven't announced anything this year, but. Maybe I put the bucket in. All right, we're on. We're back. I think we're on back, right? Okay. Next on the agenda, we're down to G. How are we going to proceed with these? I know there's one, two, seven listed. Ms. Wells, you wanna begin the process here on this?
Sure.
Mr., just a quick explanation?
Yeah.
Quick explanation.
Yeah.
And then it automatically goes anyway, so.
Okay, yes, all of these are first readings. But all of them, I think you've seen before, so we'll just go through them again, and if you have any more questions, just let me know. So the first one is on the proposal to exclude gun ranges in, it says on your agenda, certain districts, but it's really all districts. It's a restriction that would remove outdoor gun ranges from the zoning ordinance, Article Six, Section G, Tables One and Three. So that would be removing it from the general business, RR Three and RR Five districts. Striking out gun ranges at all.
Would that be commercial only, or if someone wanted a private range?
That would be any, any outdoor range.
Our sheet says commercial.
Commercial.
Okay.
The heading in the zoning ordinance says commercial. On the, on the Article Six matrix, it says, "Commercial Outdoor." So I, I think it would be fair to say it's commercial.
Okay.
I mean, if somebody wanted to go fire their gun on their property and they're not otherwise violating the law, they can do it.
It's not really a gun range.
I know people have gun ranges on their property.
Right, well, that does raise an issue.
Well, that's not commercial, it's a private range.
Right, yeah. For a club, a membership club, it's not necessarily commercial. So, that's something we would wanna think about.
All right, well, this is the first reading, as you said, anyhow.
Right.
Why don't we, we understand that one. What's number two?
Wait a minute. This is for a commercial, as the heading says. So if you have, if you wanna hunt, or you wanna go on your property, and if you've got hopefully enough property, you're going to be able to shoot.
Well, that, that's what I wanted to clarify there, because that's not what she was saying. She was saying for all gun ranges.
Well, gun ra.
All outdoor gun ranges.
Ranges as opposed to personal property, yeah.
Not personal property.
Right.
Yeah.
Not personal property, there are some who have personal property and have, have.
Okay.
That's all I wanted, make sure it was commercial.
Well, yeah, okay.
That's all.
We'll cross that bridge later. I just wanna add, though, that archery ranges are moved down as a separate item, and they are still permitted in the residential, RR Three and RR Five zones.
But.
As a special use permit.
That's on the first page, ten, right?
I thought we were going, we were not going to have night lighted.
Yeah, we're gonna strike the lighting.
Okay, you're gonna take that out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions further? Do you wanna move on to number two?
All right, that's what I had asked a second ago, but.
Okay.
It's Article Nine here?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
All right, so what this would do would add a section, a new section, nine twenty-seven, which would allow accessory dwelling structures, and nine twenty-eight, which would allow accessory family dwelling units within an existing residence. This is to make our zoning ordinance work better with the state's twenty-seventeen accessory unit change in the law, which would allow families within the existing footprint of their house to create an additional unit for a family member. We just felt like, in order to manage that process, we needed to clarify that in our zoning ordinance, so that people aren't just essentially adding a new unit to their house without any understanding of what is actually happening. So that's what this process does. And I believe that on the last one, you did have a question, because we had in the language that if it's, if it's no longer being used for a family member and you still have sort of a kitchen set up, we initially had that you would have to basically dismantle that. We have changed that language, so that really, they just need to call our office and sort of let us know that, that this permission that they have is terminated. But they can still keep the unit in, keep all, everything in.
But they can't use it as rental?
No, not unless they wanna go back through the process again, but they can't use it as a rental property.
Okay, and they can't use it as a B&amp;B, Airbnb?
Well, not, not under our zoning currently.
Okay.
So if somebody has an in-law, and they've got the kitchen and everything's all set up, are we actually going to make them tear it out?
No, that's the point I was saying, is that we're not gonna make them.
I wanna clarify that, because I've had that question quite often.
Well, that's what the original draft that we floated said, but we removed that.
Right, okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Look, okay, and there's no paperwork on G3, G4, and G5, right? I don't, I didn't get any. I, I have G6 and G7. Is it just only because it's regarding fees? Is that Article Three, G3, on our agenda?
You've, you've had paper, well, it's not a lot of paperwork on it anyway, it's just little tiny changes.
Right, well, we don't have anything tonight, and the first reading, so I'm not missing anything. We just, you don't have it here.
Yeah, well, it's not really, like, we're just adding a line to a table, so it's not really.
So it's a fee?
Yeah.
All right, all right, well, that's what I thought, but you got it, I don't, okay. All right, so that's G3, G4, G5?
Yeah, so, like I said, G3 is adding zoning certificate fees, which we are currently charging, but it doesn't actually appear in the ordinance. So it's just administrative correction.
Right.
G4 is to allow us to charge applicants for reasonable fees that are associated with their application.
Reasonable cost, yep.
G5 is actually to go, goes a little farther in that if the application, if the applicant somehow delays a meeting, that causes costs for the town.
Right, okay.
Then we charge them for that too.
Okay. Bringing in the money. Okay, number six.
G6.
Number six.
G6 is that, instead of paying for stenography through my department, we actually charge applicants for their stenography costs.
Okay, I had that one, yep.
Okay, and then G7 is a little different, in that we have non-conforming lots in town. Those are lots that don't have the square footage according to zoning. Right now, we require applicants to go to the planning commission before the zoning board to get an advisory recommendation for changes that they wanna make to their properties, no matter what it is. So this would remove that requirement. And of course, the zoning board always has the option to refer it to the planning commission if they feel, feel like there's something they can't handle, so.
Okay. Questions?